Welcome to the April 26, 2022, 6:30 PM City Council Meeting. We do have a quorum, so I'll call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? And the pledge to the flag.
Let me lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unironed, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, would you please read the rules of speak?
Yes, sir. Individuals wishing to speak on public and non-public hearing agenda items must complete a sign-up card prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on quasi-judicial public hearings must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath.
Oh, easy, easy, easy. That's a heck of a start, right there.
Sign-up cards are available on the table in the council chamber. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions, but not both. No sign-up card is required. Citizens shall not comment on any issue more than once during the meeting. All comments, except petitions and requests, must address the pending issue and citizens will be given three minutes to speak on all items. Citizens wishing to speak on the consent agenda must submit a comment card identifying the items of interest. Speakers shall be given three minutes per item. However, citizens wishing to speak on more than three consent agenda items shall be limited to speaking for a total of 10 minutes regardless of the number of items identified. All sign-up cards and exhibits being submitted to City Council should be placed in the box on the table in the council chamber.
Thank you very much, City Clerk. I don't have any motion for minutes because we don't have any to approve at this time. City Manager, special recognitions and presentations.
We have none, sir.
Would you like to make any pulls here?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. Staff would like to table item 9B to 10 May 22.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion passes. 9B is tabled.
9C, staff would like to table to 26 July 22.
So moved.
9C to be tabled. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? 9C is tabled.
And item 9D has been withdrawn per the applicant's request.
And no need for us to do anything with that?
Right.
Perfect. All right, sir. City Manager?
Yes, sir. The first item tonight is item 6A, which is the Student Advisory Council Annual Report. FY 2122 Student Advisory Council Annual Report, including the recommendations and goals for the 2022-23, will be presented and no action is required. All yours.
All right. Thank you, sir. So we move to... Oh, there you go. Go ahead, sir.
Good afternoon, everybody. The 2021-2022 Student Advisory Council expresses its appreciation to Mayor Daniel E. Diesel, Vice Mayor Robert L. Jordan, and council members Jolynn Nelson, Josie Robinson, and Dr. Sarah Stokel for their continued support and encouragement. We also express our appreciation to City Manager Scott Larice, Astronaut High School Advisor Christina Sorato, North Brevard Homeschool Association Advisor Julie Pringle, Titusville High School Advisor Michael Triandophills, City Staff Liaison Emily Campbell, and other city staff that provided our council with guidance in its decision-making process. The 2021-2022 Student Advisory Council members include, from Astronaut High School, Co-Chair Emily Ellis, Senior, Vice Chair Savannah Seaver, Junior, Member Addison Flake, Sophomore, and Member Callie Sorato, Freshman. North Brevard Homeschool Association includes Co-Chair Ben Hamilton, Senior, Member Aleah DiMicki, Junior, Secretary Edie Pringle, Sophomore, and Member Julia Moon, Freshman. And from Titusville High School, Co-Chair Jacob Phillips, Senior, Member Aiden Spare, Junior, Member Richie Dobbs, Sophomore, Member Victoria Hillary, Freshman. And with that, some of our members will now introduce and talk about some of our upcoming goals for the next council members.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Hello, my name is Ben Hamilton. I'm the 12th grade representative for the North Brevard Homeschool Association. The first goal that we wanted to cover was completing the script to update the 2008 Last Dance prom video, which was an anti-drinking and driving video. And this year, the Student Advisory Council completed the task of writing the Last Dance prom video script, and they made a promotional video for the drink-dive-die.com website. The campaign was created in 2008 by the Student Advisory Council, and it was to make the youth more aware of the dangers of drinking and driving and the mass effects that it can have. So we launched the concept to make the anti-drinking video to warrant teens about drinking and driving in the 2006-2007 Student Advisory Council term. And we had this idea because there were a local set of teens killed in a drinking and driving accident just recently. And we completed that video in the 2008-2009 term. The 2008 and 2009 term mailed a copy of the Last Dance video to 67 school boards in Florida, the state attorney's office, the local junior and high school schools, and the Titusville Police and Fire, local television stations, and local organizations that target teenage drinking and driving. We received a $2,000 donation from the State Farm Insurance in the 2009-2010 year as a result of the insurers' Project Ignition essay competition that the Student Advisory Council entered and were awarded that sum of money. The Vice Chair Savannah Seaver, Member Julia Moon, and Member Callie Sorato were responsible for completing that script that we wrote this year. And they include the finishing scenes, and they're deliberating for the ending of the play, so it is finalized, and we will be producing it in the coming years. And the Advisory Council has begun casting and filming. So Vice Chair Savannah Seaver, Member Julia Moon, and Member Callie Sorato attended three special meetings with the senior meter specialist Curtis Corwin. And they plan to complete, and they have completed the script, and they're finalizing it, and they finalize it at the council meetings, and that the filming will begin next year. That's all I have for you. Thank you for your time.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Okay, another thing student advisory council members did this year was organize and hold a beach cleanup. We held it on November 13, 2021, at Playlinda Beach. The event replaced last year's recommendation for an event called Earthwise to develop, motivate, educate, and activate our community to reduce littering, recycle, beautify, and sustain the environment for the benefit of Titusville. The Student Advisory Council advertised the cleanup to each of our respective schools to get volunteers to help. The Sunrise Bread Company generously donated and provided breakfast for all the volunteers. The Park Rangers at Canaveral National Seashore were friendly and helpful in the execution of this event. They provided directions, trash bags, sunscreen, and information packets for all the volunteers. The weather was beautiful, and the event was effective and ran smoothly. The Student Advisory Council had a great time cleaning up Playlinda Beach and learning firsthand what it means to help our community as citizens of Titusville. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name's Edie Pringle. I'm a sophomore and secretary of the Student Advisory Council representing North Brevard Homeschool Association. On March 3, 2022, the Student Advisory Council hosted our youth leadership seminar at Parish Medical Center. We chose three speakers, Mary Pringle, Jared Bales, and Mike Knight, to meet and speak with the students from Titusville High School, Astronaut High School, and the North Brevard Homeschool Association. They spoke about what leadership meant, how to show it, and how to use it to help their communities. Not only did these speakers meet with the students, but also Titusville Sustainability Planner Rachel Mueller, who hosted the main activity. Students got the chance to design their own city layouts. Students were split into groups, and each group had a different environment or obstacle they had to consider when constructing their city. While they were building and planning, city council members stopped by to talk with the students, Vice Mayor Robert Jordan, as well as City Planner Scott Larice. This seminar was the perfect way to engage with young student leaders and help them realize their potential in being a leader for their community, no matter what path they choose.
Thank you. There you go.
From Astronaut High School. So in the Student Advisory Council's spring meetings, we discussed the goals we wanted to plan for the upcoming school year. In collaboration with the National Park Service, the council will continue to hold its annual beach cleanup at Playlinda Beach. The council will also continue to fill an updated version of the Drink Dive Die film aimed at high school students in order to combat driving under the influence. Filming will be facilitated by the council over summer, and the progress will be made into the following year. The council wants to bring back the mock city council for local high school students in order to expose young people to the inner workings of the government and encourage them to take more action. Finally, the council desires to participate in the Chamber of Commerce's longest table event in order to interact with more community members. Thank you.
Thank you. Very well done. Got it? Very good. First of all, congratulations on being here. I appreciate you doing what you do with the city council. I also will say that for you guys to walk into the meeting today, you felt like, wow, there was a renewed interest in what we're doing. So, and I say that kiddingly, but I also say that as I sit up there and look out there and 15, 16 years old, 17, and to walk into a surprise and say, ooh, there's a lot of people here. I thought you all did very, very, very well. Thank you for your presentation. With that, City Manager, we do move to the scholarships.
Yes, sir. On item 6B, which is the Student Advisory Scholarships, Award III scholarships to Jacobs Phillips of Titusville High School, Benjamin Hamilton of North Brevard Homeschool Association, and Emily Ellis of Astronaut High School. If you could please come forward, the mayor will present to you.
We don't need a vote on this sort of thing.
No, sir.
All right. We move on to?
Item 6C, which is the Student Advisory Council Membership Appointments for School Year 2223. It's recommended that the proposed slate of students be confirmed and appointed to the FY correctional school year 2223 Student Advisory Council as selected and appointed by their prospective schools, and of course, with Resolution 1, 2017.
And we need a motion to vote on the whole deal. All right. Nothing else from staff? Anything you want to add on that, Ms. Emily? So we will move to... Are there any cards on this? Can I have a motion, please?
Move to confirm the proposed slate of students as members of the 2223 Student Advisory Council.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Nelson? Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Thank you, and congratulations. Motion carries. We appreciate you guys. You're our future. Thank you. I would say, as they depart and take those papers off, there's some more seats up front. I'm gonna wait just a second on that. Thank you guys again. And thank you guys for being quite the crowd. They've never had that many people here to speak to. Matter of fact, I haven't either. All right. City Manager?
Onto item 6D, which is the Titusville Housing Authority Semi-Annual Report is written. It's included in your agenda packet. No actions required.
All right. Thank you. We move on to our first petitions and requests. And just kind of a reminder, this still isn't our part yet, as far as the windover part. But petitions and requests from the public. Come on. All right.
Good evening, Stan Johnson. Thank you for your public service here. And thank you for a lot of good work that you're doing. I'm Stan Johnson, and you know, I'm a professional engineer, and I have some issues about how the conduct of business is going. And for example, if you read right here, right here, it says, "Petition and request from public present. Non-agenda items." "Non-agenda items only." In other words, is if I have a problem with the minutes of the meeting, I can't speak against them. If I have a problem with the Titusville Housing Authority, which was on the agenda item, I can't say anything about it. If I have to, if I want to speak on item 11A, which is near the end of the meeting, which may be at 11 o'clock, I can't speak on it. I have to wait till the end of the meeting to speak. Who in the world put this on here? Who did that? City Council, City Manager? It doesn't make any sense at all. Are you listening? I don't think you're listening, because generally, I come up here and I speak, and nothing happens. Just like, for example, that SNJ Oaks. I've had repeated promises, Mr. Diesel, that you were gonna do something about SNJ Oaks. I've sent all kinds of emails on you about the problems with that project. And what I have response is from city staff. The response is, nothing. From council members, nothing. You made some promises, and it's been one month, two months, three months, four months. It's been over six months, and that thing's still going on. So I'm asking you to take a look at that. I know you're a good man. You can do it. Thank you. So I like that. Now, some other things I'd like to speak about is that I still have a problem with the consent order, that was the consent order 2021-0113 that says the sewage spill in the river stopped December the 19th, which we all know. We all know it didn't. But we filled a false report that's supported by FDEP. It's supported by Florida Today. It's supported by St. John's River Water Management District. It's supported by our city manager. It's supported by Sean Stoff, our Director of Water Resources. But we all know it's untrue. I mean, we got all kinds of testimony, photos, witnesses, and so forth, that it was even occurring in February. But the official report is December the 19th, and it's hurting us. It's hurting the river. It's hurting us bad. I'm asking you to tell the truth. The best thing to do is to tell the truth. Do what's right. Thank you.
City Manager? Oh, anybody else have petitions or requests? I got the feeling we've all got a different focus. All right. Thank you. City Manager?
Yes, we're on to consent now?
Okay, good. Come on. Come on. They're coming from all corners. Bar and wine. Hey, how are you?
Hi, how are you?
Good.
My name is Jamal Chaparro. I own a business here in Titusville.
You can speak up a little bit. I can't hear.
My name is Jamal Chaparro, and I own a business here in South Hopkins Avenue. And I would need your help to, if it's possible, with you guys' permission, to change the coal. Because right now, I had a U-Haul rental that's parking in the back of my business. And I have some type of messages that I have to move U-Haul. And I invested $65,000 for my package in the property. So I need help. If you guys can change the coal, that I can be able to have that in my business.
Is there anything you want to add there, Ms. Busaka? Are you here for something else?
No, I'm here in case this gentleman needed assistance or you had questions.
Is there anything you want to... Because I'm not real familiar with this. As a matter of fact, not at all.
The property he's talking about is adjacent to the Save-A-Lot, that small building. I don't know the address.
100 South?
There you go.
100 South Hopkins Avenue.
The Save-A-Lot area. Okay, go ahead.
He has put some uses on there. Right now, he has rental trucks, which are not permitted in that district. And so he, I believe, has a code enforcement's come out to talk to him, and he would like to see the code amended. I know the first question you're going to ask is, can the ordinance that's currently being considered do that? And the answer is, it was not advertised for a change to the downtown district. It was advertised for midtown district. So if you wanted to have rental trucks available in the downtown area, we would have to go back and start the process all over again, or you'd have to tell us to go forward with the ordinance as it currently is coming forward, and then for us to provide your report to see if you wanted to move forward to allow those uses. This gentleman has also spoken about a couple of other uses that in the past, we've told him were not permitted. So he may have lots of ideas.
All right. It sounds to me that we're talking possible code ordinance, or at least that's what he would be seeking. That certainly isn't something we can jump on and say, let's change it tonight. There'd have to be an advisement, I believe, from staff.
Right. Would you like a report? I think that's what the gentleman wants to do, is can he start this process moving?
All right. Member Nelson?
I'm sort of thinking, let's go ahead with what we got right now. And if the staff could give us a report on whether or not this use is fitting in that particular area.
Be happy to do that. Thank you.
I think that's the key word there. It sounds like you certainly have some ideas and could use that zone change, but the question's going to be, does it fit downtown? And that's what we're gonna have to look at. So thank you for speaking with us. And Ms. Busaka, thank you for taking note of this. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, let me look both sides. Anybody else petitions and requests? All right, good. City Manager?
Onto Consent Agenda Item. Council, are there any questions of staff that you have on any of the Consent A through L?
Member Nelson?
I wanted to pull I and just get a little bit more detail on that item.
Council, do you want to pull any other items? That's the second question I was just asking you.
Say that again. I'm sorry.
Would you like to pull any other items?
Oh, I see none.
Clerk, are there any cards on consent?
Yes, sir. We have one individual for eight items.
And Mayor and Council, with your permission, I'd like to read the titles for the record.
Thank you.
Consent Agenda Item 8A, Approve Resolution 9, 2022, Committing Out Students From the North Brevard Area Schools. Consent Agenda Item 8B, Approve The Purchase Of A Trialator For Laboratory Services. Consent Agenda Item 8C, Approve The Purchase Of A Replacement Tow-Behind Portable Air Compressor. Consent Agenda Item 8D, Approve Funding De-obligation Letter For DEO Grant G0018. Consent Agenda Item 8E, Accept And Authorize City Manager To Participate In The State of Florida Opioid Litigation Settlement Agreements. Consent Agenda Item 8F, Accept The FY 2021 Annual Report For The City of Titusville Community Redevelopment Agency. Consent Agenda Item 8G, Approve And Authorize The Execution Of The First Amendment To The Interlocal Agreement With Brevard County For Hope Hammock Affordable Housing. Consent Agenda Item 8H, Approve The Sandpoint Park Battle Box Design. Consent Agenda Item 8I, Which Will Be Pulled, Approve Bid For Scoby Park Landscape Plantings. Consent Agenda Item 8J, Accept The Florida Forest Service Forestry Grant. Consent Agenda Item 8K, Approve The Final Rankings And Award For Professional Engineering Services For The City Of Titusville Marina Dock Repairs, Request Qualifications RFQ 22Q 034 To Cummings Cedarburg Incorporated Of Jupiter, Florida. Consent Agenda Item 8L, Increase And Approve The Annual Authorized Amount For Cross-Connection Control Program Services Contract. And Consent I, Do you want to vote on everything but... Oh, we gotta do the cards first.
We got cards first, yes. You want to go and talk about I now, or you want to wait till after?
Do you want to pull I first?
I'm sorry? Go ahead, Member Nelson.
I was just hoping that Mr. Cook could give us some more information, maybe concept plan, what are we doing down there, that kind of information.
Sure. And Ms. Wells is gonna hand you what my staff put together this afternoon, anticipation of what is the representation of all the landscaping proposed. It's all Florida natives, spread throughout both planters along Indian River and a bioswell. So as you look through Page 1, are the trees being installed. Page 2 are the smaller landscape features and planters. And the third page is what's being used in the bioswell, which is essentially the small pond that's on the Scoby Park site that is fed by piping from the commons.
Okay, so this will not include the pervious payment, right?
Not this contractor, no.
Okay, or the benches. This is just for...
No, the benches are... We bought the benches. Staff has those. We'll install those once we get the pervious poured. We'll do that install ourselves. We've had the benches for a few weeks now.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, we good?
I think we're good.
Okay, then. Call the card, please.
Stan Johnston?
Stan Johnston, professional engineer and former city employee and county employee and so forth. I've got, uh, let me just go through it real quickly. I know, uh, Mr., uh, Joe up there would like to know what's going on here. So let me go quickly. Approval for two items, uh, 8D and 8E, uh, neither, neither for 8F, 8H, 8I, 8J, and 8L. 8I is a real quick, quick comment. In other words, it's landscape plantings is that I'm going to request this time is because I just got another notice from somebody that said, hey, listen, let's not do these, uh, plastic plants, $35,000 and $20,000 maintenance per year and so forth like that. And so, and this is the gateway to nature and space. So I'm, I'm asking you for Scoby Park, don't put plastic plants or plastic flamingos out there at the park. Please don't do that because it's just pollution. Uh, and, uh, although you might think it, it's nonsense for me to ask that, but by golly, I don't want to see plastic plants out there. Thank you. On that, 8I. On, uh, 8B and 8H, 8B is approval, 8H is neither. They have to do with some things I'm concerned about. They have to do with, uh, what, what I asked counsel to do just on, uh, just a few minutes ago, and that is to do the right thing, uh, to do the right thing. Do what is truthful. Uh, in this, in this case, as we have involved is, uh, in 8B is I'm approving of 8B, which is, uh, purchasing a tr- a tie trader for the laboratory services. Laboratory Services gave a bunch of reports that you're, you're ignoring, ignoring about the pollution in the river. So I'm, 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 I want to support that, but, but their boss, which is Sean Stauffer over there in the green shirt, my goodness, he gave false reports to FD, FDEP, the City of Tyusville, to you guys. And, and, uh, so that's, that's a problem. So he's in charge of this laboratory services and he's the one who's giving false reports and so forth, and he's the boss man. So I have problems with, with what's going on with 8B. And I also have trouble with 8H regarding the sewage spill. Because it has to do with who? Mr. Stauffer, which I've been asking him to tell the truth, which he gives false reports, false reports to FDEP, to council, City Manager and so forth. And, and this is something that should not be happening here in the City of Tyusville, the gateway to nature and space. And I just, I just shared with you the, the consent order that said that the sewage spill stopped on December the, December the 19th, and it certainly didn't. Not going to repeat that. Thank you. Okay, so, so, um, uh, on, uh, I wrote some things down here. Is that, uh, uh, on, on 8H is the Sandpoint Park Baffle Box Design? I'm, I'm, I'm putting neither, neither on this because although it's $52,000, I think the money could be well spent better off in, uh, just telling the truth about what's going on. And I'm, what I'm talking about, the sewage spill, uh, when I make calls, for example, $52,000, maybe if somebody could answer the phone at Water Resources to send messages, like for example, I say, please turn the fountains off that spraying people with sewage. No answers. Can't get, can't get, can't get a response. I even go there and what they do is they, they call the police on me. They call the police and say, don't come back to Water Resources. You need to, you need to go somewhere else when you have a complaint about Water Resources. And Sewage Department wanted me to go to the sewage treatment plant instead, so what they do? They had the police on me. And I still have an order to not trespass the plant, even though, yeah, okay, keep it going. So, so, uh, this, this has to do with, uh, Mr. Stauffer, who, who I believe, uh, we should get rid of. Because he's not, he's not helping us out. It's false reports and so forth. And the same, same, same goes for our City Manager. He's been so report, he's been supporting that and everybody knows. Everybody knows the sewage spill continued. Just about everybody know, not everybody, not everybody, because it doesn't, Florida today won't report it. So, so that, that goes for that. Let's go to some, something else now. 8D I have. Now, I, I, I said 8D and 8E, I approved of that. And, uh, uh, 8J and 8L are neither on, on those. And I don't quite understand 8L, Cross Connection Control Program Services. It looks like it's, it's connection control, uh, the, uh, and I'm not absolutely sure what that means, but, so I would like to, an explanation of that further if it has to do with, with, uh, environmental, because, uh, we have problems with false reports, uh, with our, uh, r- river. So I'm concerned, I'm just, 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 just me, let me do in concluding, in conclusion, I'm asking you to do the right thing and tell the truth. And we have not only problems with that, but, uh, Mr. Mr. Stauffer was, uh, in 2012, he told, uh, uh, different things that were untrue about the flood plains, about the dams, the weirs and so forth like that. And so we have problems with flood plains and, uh, our comp plan that are uncorrected because of that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Um, any other cards?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move that we approve consent agenda items 8A through 8L.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor to approve consent agenda.
Yeah, I'd second it.
I have a second from Member Nelson. Roll call, vote.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Consent agenda passes unanimously, City Manager.
On to, uh, 9A, which is ordinance 132022, marinas and yacht basins. This will be the second reading and final public hearing. The City Attorney will read for the record.
Ordinance number 132022, an ordinance of the City of Tyusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances related to marinas by amending sections 28-54 Use Table and 28-143 Marina and Yacht Basin, to establish marinas and yacht basins as a limited use in the downtown mixed-use uptown and civic waterfront sub-districts, and to require appropriate sewage pump-out facilities in marinas servicing boats with onboard facilities. And amending section 28-324 Downtown Mixed Use DMU Smart Code to remove residential mixed-use requirement for marinas, providing for separability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, an effective date, and incorporation into the code.
The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this ordinance on 6 April 2022 and voted unanimously 7-0 to approve. The Community Redevelopment Agency considered the ordinance on April 12th, unanimously 6-0 voted to approve. The code currently does not permit marinas and yacht basins as a permitted use in the uptown district of the downtown use DMU zoning districts. Research and history of the DMU zoning districts indicates that the exclusion of marinas from the uptown sub-district may have been based on the intent to redevelop the site of Westland Marina into a mixed-use development. However, the multifamily project has not materialized and code as written does not reflect the continued operational use of an existing marina on North Washington Avenue. Ms. Busaka is here to answer any questions that you may have on this, the public hearing on ordinance 132022.
Ms. Busaka, anything you want to add to that?
Yes, sir.
Counsel, do you have any questions on that? Do I have any cards on that?
One card, Stan Johnston.
Thank you, sir. Um, do I have anything else from counsel? My, I think I know what you're going to do. Uh, can we have a motion, please?
Mr. Mayor, in counsel, I move that we approve ordinance number 13-2022, marinas and yacht basin.
Second.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor, a second from Member Nelson. Roll call, vote.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Motion passes unanimously, City Manager.
Skipping 9B through D, we're on item 9E, which is a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment to 2022 for Sisson Road townhouses. This is the public hearing for ordinance 192022, and the City Attorney will read the ordinance for the record.
Ordinance number 192022, an ordinance of the City of Tyusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances by amending ordinance number 601988, which adopted the comprehensive plan of the City of Tyusville by amending the future land use map by changing land use designation on approximately 11.2 acres plus or minus of property located west of Sisson Road, parcel ID number 223527AV106, from the medium-density residential future land use to the high-density residential future land use designation, and providing for an effective date. Ordinance number 20-2022, an ordinance of the City of Tyusville, Florida, amending ordinance number 5193 of the City of Tyusville by amending the zoning map made a part of said ordinance by reference by changing the multifamily medium-density residential R2 to the multifamily high-density residential R3 zoning district on approximately 11.82 acres plus or minus of property located west of Sisson Road, parcel ID number 223527AV106, and providing for an effective date.
The Planning and Zoning Commission, acting as the local planning agency, considered this item on 6 April 22 and recommended approval of the future land use map ordinance 6 to 1, and the rezoning with concept plan of a maximum of 91 units 7-0. One member voted against the, uh, future land use map ordinance due to the potential impact to the wellfield based on staff's recommendation. The applicant is requesting a small-scale comprehensive amendment with rezoning to utilize one zoning development standards for the purposes of approving a concept plan for 91 townhomes. The property lies west of Sisson Road. The intent of the request is to change the western portion of the 11.82 acre partial with tax ID number 2213531 from current me- uh, medium-density residential future land use to high-density residential, uh, and rezone the same portion of the property from multifamily medium-density residential R2 zoning to high-density residential R3. The acreage and the entire property includes the subject tax ID number. Staff recommends, uh, preserving the existing land use as a transition between low and high-density residential land uses. Ms. Busaka is here to answer questions that you may have.
Uh, thank you. Ms. Busaka, you have anything you want to add to that?
Yes, if I could. Uh, the property is located within a wellfield radii in the area of critical concern. There are parts of the property with, in 300 feet of a well, which limits the maximum impervious surface to 20%. A portion of the property lies within the 750-foot radii, which limits the impervious surface to 25%. And a portion within the property is within the 1,500 feet, which limits the impervious surface to 30%. It doesn't matter whether the amend, there's an amendment or not to the zoning or the land use, those impervious surfaces will remain there, unrelated to the land use or density. If there is, uh, the land use and amendment and rezoning as approved can result in an increase in the total number of residential units from the current 191 units to a total of 226 units. However, the applicant did provide a concept plan that would limit the density to 91 townhomes. The, uh, concern of the staff is that the more units there are closer to the wells, the greater opportunity there is for contamination of those wells because of, uh, the oils and greases that come off of cars, that kind of thing. However, that is also, uh, a trade-off when you think about traffic where there is, um, this, if the concept plan is approved, would be fewer residences, which would cause fewer traffic impacts to Sisson Road. As, uh, the report talks about, if there are over 500 trips a day, which are expected at the 91 units, then there would have to be a traffic engineering study. And the traffic engineering study, if there were recommendations for any improvements on Sisson Road, would have to be done as part of the review of this project. If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
All right, clarify something for me. You just noted that, um, this would decrease traffic on Sisson Road?
Well, the potential right now, if you just looked at the current zoning and the current land use, is a total of 191 units. Now, whether those units could actually be built based on the impervious surface requirements, the drainage requirements, I, I don't know. It's, to my mind, unlikely. When you take raw land and multiply it times a number, you usually get at least 30% more than you would expect on the ground because you still have to put in retention and driveways and landscaping and all of those development. But that is the raw, that's the math. If you take the total number of units, time the, times the acreage, that's the number you would get.
Okay, so as this moves forward, there would have to be a traffic study anyway?
Yes, sir, regardless of the 91 units that are being proposed by the development, the developer or any additional, as long as it's over 500 trips a day, which is about 50 units, a little bit more maybe in multifamily, but.
Okay, outside of the wells, the traffic, although you did say there could be a benefit, but the traffic is my biggest concern. And, uh, anybody who travels Sisson very often realizes it's really, it's been outgrown. And, um, it concerns me with the, um, people coming off of Denise Drive there and Margie and some of the others, and I travel it every day. It's very difficult to even think about getting to that, uh, the old SPCA. It's not called that anymore, but, uh, it's a very busy road. I don't know that I want to see us drop another 500 trips on that road, but we have time to look at that. Uh, Member Stokel?
Yep, another clarifying question. So if we go with staff's recommendation, which is to not change the comp plan and not do the rezoning, they can still go through with their concept plan, if I'm reading this correctly?
What they can do is they can still have their 91 units. What they will have is on the western side of this property, they will have larger lots. On the eastern side, they will have smaller lots. What the developer would like to do is to have a common product with all of the same size lots. But they, they're, they have a representative here that has a presentation that can explain this probably in more detail.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, just one question. Um, you alluded to 500 trips. Explain what a trip is.
A trip is, well, I'll, I'll put it this way. When the mailman comes, that's two trips. It's one in and one out. So, um, if you go to work and come home, that's two trips. So as you can see, uh, two people going back and forth to work and the mailman is six trips a day.
Member Robinson?
Yes, and those trips is, um, the delivery, UPS and, uh, a lie counted in there?
Yes, and, yes, sir, that's, the way that the, I, I'm not a traffic engineer, but the way the IT manual works is I've been, as I understand it, is that they look at hundreds, if not thousands, of different kinds of developments in certain characters. In other words, single-family, multifamily, hospital, drive-through restaurants, and they put those tubes out and they count the number of cars that go back and forth. And so, uh, multi, single-family has about 10 trips a day and multifamily typically has a few less than that, so maybe eight and a half, nine, something like that. So anything, if we get over about 52, maybe multifamily, you're going to have 500 trips a day.
Thank you. Member Nelson?
So if we don't go through this, potentially we have a lot more people on that piece of property, correct?
It's the binding concept plan that is limiting this to 91 trips. It's not the, I mean, 91 units. It's not the zoning and it's not the land use.
Okay.
Now, so the question probably is going to come up, can we require a concept plan without a rezoning?
Right.
Yes, I knew that would come up.
Yes.
There's no action taken if there's no rezoning.
So that it's not binding? That case, correct?
Correct.
And potentially playing devil's advocate, instead of having a single floor, um, units, one floor, one-story units, potentially they can go up.
They can. And now what they're, what they're suggesting is two-story townhomes, but they could make a more traditional multifamily with three stories and put more units. Yes, ma'am?
Okay, thanks.
Uh, Member Stokel?
Okay, last clarifying question off of that. That is if we do go through it with the rezoning, because we'll be going to, from R2 to R3, which would allow for more.
Well, they can currently, again, if we assume that you're just taking the raw number of acres, multiplying it time, they could currently, we estimate, put in 191 units.
Currently.
Currently.
But then if it gets changed. But then if it gets changed, that number increases.
It does, without the binding, without the concept plan. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Applicant this year? Thank you. Applicant may present and give your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Good evening. My name is Tara Tedrow-Lounslaw, 215 North Eola Drive, Orlando, Florida, here on behalf of the applicant. Hopefully, I can answer some of the questions you all had in the beginning, too, with a little bit more detail with this presentation. So you can see where the property is located, and it's a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment with a concurrent rezoning. It's only a 5.5-acre portion of an overall property. So part of that is an 11.2-acre parcel that has one zoning, but the overall property itself is 15.2 acres total, but tonight's request is just for the 5.5-acre parcel in question. You can see on this map, a little bit hard with the two different yellows, but there are two different future land use and zoning designations on the property, and those are medium-density residential, which currently, under your comprehensive plan, future land use designation allows a maximum of 10 units an acre. Under high-density residential, it allows a maximum of 15 units per acre. So the property has both medium-density residential and high-density residential on the property as of today. Our proposed future land use designation is to have consistency of high-density residential, but again, while it is a high-density residential future land use designation with a higher zoning designation than what exists on that 5.5 acres today, our binding site plan will lock us into a lower density than what is permitted by right today. So the current zoning designations, as you can see, again, correspond to those two different yellows, R2 and R3. One of the notes that came up from staff was, conceptually, from, I guess, a planning perspective, having those two different future land use designations and zonings served as a buffer. And we'll talk about why I think it's actually a better functional buffer to lock in a lower density, rather than just having a buffer that corresponds to colors on a map. Because you'll see that even with those colors on a map, we have apartments on the project to the south of us, we have townhomes on the project to the north of us. So I think the best buffer, if you're going to have one in real life, is to buffer it with a lower density than what you have surrounding the project, which is what we would provide. Our proposed zoning designation then on the 5.5-acre parcel in question would be R3. You can see, under your existing code, R2 and R3 both would allow multifamily and townhomes by right today, meaning if somebody came in and they wanted to pull permits without going through the process I'm presenting to you tonight, they could do that, and they could build a three-story multifamily apartment project, just like what our neighbors to the south did, by right today, at a higher density than what we are proposing. The real critical issue, oh, sorry, the real critical issue comes down to a distinction on the R2 and R3 residential development standards. So 24 feet is what's allowed under your R2, and then 20 feet is what's allowed under R3, in terms of your lot width standards. Our entire request tonight came from the desire of my client to be able to have a consistent product type in the community, so that all of the lot widths were at 20 feet instead of 24 feet. Now, this might seem very minor in nature, and seems like we're jumping through quite a few hoops just to get a consistent product type, but developers want to be able to have that type of product consistency in their community. It really causes a lot of problems if we have some 24s and some 20s dispersed throughout, especially given the way that the lot is sized. So in order to get that 20-foot lot width allowability across all of our products, rather than having it kind of separated on 5.5 acres versus the others, we've gone through the process to get the consistent zoning and future land use across the property. I think the density comparison table should help you. The maximum density, so existing as of today, is that between the 10 dwelling units an acre and 15 dwelling units an acre, that could allow a max of up to 200, just mathematically. I think your staff was noting 191 is what you can get with some of the constraints for the wellfield. So let's take the smaller of those numbers. 191 is what would be allowed by right today. What we are requesting with the proposed density is to constrain to a 5.99 dwelling unit per acre limitation for 91 units. I am typically coming before elected officials like you, asking for more density all the time. This is an unusual circumstance where we are locking the site into a lower density than what is allowed today by right. So if my client doesn't develop this property, again, a multifamily developer can come in and put 191 units on a three-story product type, similar to what our neighbors to the south have done. So this is all just in an effort for a unified development program on the piece of property. If you approve tonight, there is a binding concept plan that locks us into 91 units. If my client, for some reason, did not build this project, which they have every intention of moving forward and breaking ground as soon as permitting would allow them to, they would move forward with that permitting process, and they'd be locked into the binding concept plan. If they didn't, and somebody else came in and they wanted to develop on this property, regardless of the future land use and the zoning you approved tonight, if they wanted to change to increase the density, they'd have to come back through the same process to get that binding concept plan revised and approved, and that's a public hearing process, it would have to come back before you. So we really are locking in those 91 units, and that is the density that will be guaranteed on the property, rather than the up to potentially 191 that you could get today otherwise. This just shows you the density of the surrounding developments. Oak Ridge Townhomes to our north, those are 72 townhomes, that's an 8.2 dwelling unit per acre density. To the south, Timbertrace Apartments has 204 apartment units, those are three-story products, and they have approximately 11.9 dwelling units per acre over the property. At 5.99 dwelling units per acre, that's why I was making the argument that we are functionally a better buffer than just saying, this is high-density, this is low-density on the colors of a future land use map. So we're actually going to be providing a decreased transitional buffer between where you have single-family residential to the east and to the west, where you have a higher-density multifamily below us, and then you have another higher-density townhome product as well. So I think this is going to provide a much better buffer and a much better transition between some of those higher densities around us. So our proposed land use plan development program, again, 91 townhome units locked in through our binding plan, and that is only going to allow those at two stories, typically 33 feet in height, which is about what a single-family home at two stories builds at today. We would have 20 by 105-foot minimum lots with a max 50% coverage per lot, locked in at 5.99 dwelling units an acre, not 10 dwelling units an acre, which is the lowest of our two future land use. 40 on-street guest parking spaces, 3.7 acres of open space, which means about 42% of our project will remain pervious with the way our site is designed, and 20-foot perimeter buffers, though those perimeter buffers actually range between 23 and 90 feet setback from the property line. So under those 91 townhomes, again, we're about four units per acre below what's permitted by right today, and that maximum impervious surface area remains the same regardless of anything you approve tonight. So I appreciated that getting brought up and clarified in the beginning. Regardless of a future land use, regardless of whatever zoning the property has, your site development standards under Section 7.6 of your code very specifically define how you can place buildings on properties that are in an area of critical concern. So I said this in the planning hearing, this is like a vision test because our calculations are so very small, so I apologize for that, but what they're showing you is the breakdown under the way that your Section 7.6 performance standards calculate what you're allowed to have for impervious surface areas when you have your area of critical concern and any adjacency to a wellfield. So it is not as if denying the rezoning or the future land use change somehow gets a higher number of protection. It's exactly the same. You're held to the same standards under code because of proximity to a well, not because of zoning, not because of future land use. So we are going to adhere to those standards. We're not asking for flexibility on them, and your city certainly would not permit any flexibility on those. So we've done our calculations. We are not increasing the impervious surface area more than your code would otherwise allow, and it's indicated in your staff report that your approvals do not modify those code protections for environmentally sensitive lands. So there's a couple comprehensive plan policies that speak to the approvals that we're asking for tonight, and that is that the city shall continue to protect groundwater quality and quantity by regulating impervious surface area coverage in its prime recharge areas. And again, our proposed development is limiting the impervious coverage to meet the area of critical concern guidelines. Policy 1.11.7 talks about appropriate visual screens and buffers with landscapes, and remember, I told you we have that 20-foot buffer, but our binding concept plan actually goes up to 90 feet in buffer width in some areas. Your policy 1.14.1 talks about how you want to have different types of varieties of lot sizes and products throughout the city, and I would say that around us, there hasn't been a whole lot of new development. Some of it is a few decades old, but we are going to bring forth a type of product lower in density than what's existing around us to both the north and the south, while we're also going to be making sure that we adhere to the protections under your code. And then finally, that high-density residential usage shall be located adjacent to a collector or arterial road, and we are located adjacent to a collector road. Moreover, some basis of support from your staff report has to do with the necessity of trying to absorb some of the growth that is coming. I always say these aren't growth prohibition plans, we have growth management plans in an effort to try to see how can we can bring in residents in a way that is smart and sustainable for the future. And I think that bringing in a product type like this, that's going to be lower in density than what is permitted by right, especially given the fact that this is in an area that it's in, given the fact that there are concerns stated about traffic in the area today, locking in a lower density instead of having another apartment complex come in would probably be a better satisfaction to some of those concerns that were stated. Staffs also noted there's adequate water and sewer to service the 91 townhomes. The proposed land use change is consistent with the residential land uses on this segment of the road, and the vacant property is located between two multifamily developments and utilities are available to serve the site. They also noted that the rezoning isn't likely to cause a depreciation of property values that were consistent with zoning in the area, that a multifamily development such as townhomes is needed in the city. That was part of the staff's conclusions as well, as an alternative to your traditional detached single-family, and that we will not result in allowing additional impervious surface area. So again, that was a conclusion in the staff report, that the development is still bound to the 20, 25, and 30% impervious coverage maximums based on our proximity to an area of critical concern, and that does not change regardless of how you vote tonight. Here are some proposed architectural renderings, and I believe we had sent in a new version of our PowerPoint presentation, which may not have gotten loaded tonight, so I'll just go ahead and tell you what's, oh, nope, you're right, here we go. Maybe they're after this. No, they're not. Okay, so I can just tell you, we did have a traffic study that was preliminarily conducted, and that traffic study was going to be submitted as part of our site plans, but because it's been brought up, I'd like to share with you the results of the traffic study that we had done. Part of what was also in the staff report, too, was a preliminary concurrency assessment that the city prepares. So this wasn't prepared by our traffic study, this was done by the city, and the city gave the traffic circulation analysis based on a total of 226 residential units. So they said if we maxed out 226 residential units with the proposed future land use change that we are requesting, what would that look like in terms of impacts to levels of service? And there was a good question that was asked about how these traffic studies are run. The numbers are run based on something called an ITE manual, and so there's different additions of that manual that come out, and the professional associations across the country utilize those manuals when determining traffic counts in what we call average daily trips. So the number of trips that happen over an entire day versus trips that happen in AM peak hours and PM peak hours, 7:00 to 9:00 AM, 4:00 to 6:00 PM, when you're going to work, taking your kids to school, coming home from work, picking your kids up, those types of hours. And so when we analyzed those hours based on our traffic report, it noted that the project would generate 51 AM peak hour trips, and so those trips, as you heard, are coming in and out of the project for a total of 51, and in the PM hours, that's 4:00 to 6:00, that would be 60 PM peak hour trips would be generated. And this was prepared by Traffic Planning and Design, Inc., which are professional traffic engineers. It also noted that the adjacent roadway segment and the study intersections operate at what is considered a satisfactory level of service. And I can say, a level of service doesn't mean anything to people who drive the roads, right? When the roads are constrained and you feel like there's a lot of traffic, a level of service doesn't carry a whole lot of weight because it seems just like traffic vernacular and meaningless talk. But it matters for us in the world that we are in because we have to run these traffic studies. We pay to get them done because the city requires us to do that, because they want to know, how many trips are you projected to generate from your project, and based on that trip generation, what mitigation is required? So what do we have to do as a developer? What do we have to pay for? And they can conclude that you can't do anything to fix it. The roads are so broken, the level of service is so bad, that you shouldn't be putting any more cars on the road. That was not the conclusion that we had from the study, and it also wasn't the conclusion from your city's concurrency analysis. The study went on to find that the roadway segments that would be impacted would not be deficient in traffic capacity, so surprisingly, Sisson Road is actually meant to handle more average daily trips than are even on it today, and there are some Florida statutory law protections. Even if it was deficient, which it's not, it says, you can't really deny projects on roadways if it's a deficiency we're not creating. So it doesn't appear that there's any deficiency today by the city's analysis or by our analysis or that we would be creating a deficiency that would require us to go try to mitigate it, put in deceleration lanes or dedicate right-of-way or put in a median or, you know, signalize an intersection, not that that would apply here. So when the traffic analysis was performed based on the ITE manual standards, based on the actual counts that were taken on site, and based on the Space Coast NPO data that was provided, also takes in some seasonal rates where we adjust for peak rates throughout the year, we adjust for the annualized compounded growth rates over time, so what your traffic, what your population will likely be after our project gets built out, and what does that mean with the number of trips we're going to put on the road? And again, it concluded that there would still be capacity for our cars. I would argue that this concludes that there's not a traffic issue, but again, perceptions of traffic are very important to the people who drive those roads, right? So while maybe the level of service says there's no traffic issue, which is what we are asked to analyze, the city's going to analyze it the same way, we just wanted to show you that we did run that report, and the city's own concurrency assessment that was ran said that the maximum capacity on Sisson is actually 15,600 trips a day, and as of, if we had our project built out, that would be only at 7,877 average daily trips. So there's still half the remaining capacity on that road, given the adopted level of service by the city. And so I appreciate that that traffic is what you are going to deal with, it's not what I'm going to deal with, right? And but we are held to the standards of, is there a deficiency? And evidence says there's not from the city and from our report. So certainly, there's some capacity on that road, and one of the images that we had that didn't seem to make it in, which we can give you some copies of, it shows that we are hopeful that some of the line of sight problems I heard in the last first reading on getting out of Marjorie, that we would rectify that, in a sense, because the front of the property, when we're taking, we're going to underground those utilities, we're going to put in sidewalks, and we have our retention ponds in the front, so you're really not going to have that same visual block as if you're pulling out on Marjorie and trying to look both ways and not being able to see oncoming traffic, because we specifically wanted to make sure if there was going to be some sort of improvement to line of sight and perhaps provide easier for cars getting in and out of the roads directly adjacent to us to have a better visual line of sight. That was a lot on traffic, so I'm happy to answer any other questions at the end of this. But this just shows you the proposed architectural renderings of the type of product that we would have within this community. It's certainly been very popular and well-received in the other communities throughout the state that we have built townhome communities. And so we did get a planning commission recommendation for approval. We held a community meeting to answer questions back in February, and I am certainly happy to answer any questions that you all may have and would ask for a recommendation consistent with your planning commissions tonight.
All right, well, first of all, thank you for a thorough presentation. Well done. There were certainly some parts, you're speaking about traffic, and I'm thinking to myself, so said the person that doesn't drive that road.
Yeah.
I just was on there, I don't know how long we've been here, four hours ago. I go down Marjorie every single day, and I go down Marjorie, Marjorie, they got me saying it's Mar-G. Coming off of Sisson, I was coming up there today, and it's almost surprised me how a car was coming onto the road, and I couldn't even see that car until I got up to it. And the good news is, you've recognized that. There are some sightline issues with that road, and if you look at the map, you can see in the light area that's not real visible on Marjorie, all those condos and townhomes, all of those come out onto Sisson and generally turn right towards 405, and that's what I do. And then I head down Cocoa Way. What I'm seeing more and more, where you can really see that the traffic is building up, is by the time you get out there to 405, the line's not, many times now, isn't four or five cars or eight or 10 cars, it's 14 or 15 or 16 cars, and you're waiting three lights to get through. I'm not saying that's necessarily a safety hazard, but I am saying that whatever numbers staff, city, state want to throw out there, when I'm driving it every day, I said it when we started this, I really feel like Sisson Road is already overused. when we started this, I really feel like Sisson Road is already overused. And what you're telling me is that there's, you know, thousands of more trips that we can make on that road and it won't be an issue. I get those are the studies. And again, and you said it very clearly, and I'll say it again, but for those of us who drive it every day, there's nowhere, if there's some kind of accident getting ready to happen or something, there's no real way to pull off, you know, go to the side. There's a ditch on one side, and there's big curbs on the other side. I have concerns there. I will end that, though, by saying that the housing that you present and the housing that you would bring is housing that we need in Titusville. We are struggling with housing, and this would be a wonderful add for the housing. I have concerns in regards. I thought you answered very well the Wells question, and you went into great detail there, and I think you guys are very serious about that and the traffic. So with that, Vice Mayor.
Hey. Are you an attorney?
Yes.
Okay. Reason why I ask that, I mean, you're pretty smooth. You said some things to us, and this is not a negative, okay? You said some things to us to let us know that the law is on your side. As far as density is concerned, as far as the road is concerned, we're not close to where we would be, but there is, I think you said something about you can't stop the development from happening. You said something like that, and that caught my ear. So, and that's fine. My question to you, and you actually answered a lot of the questions in your presentation. I kept saying to myself, you need to breathe, you need to breathe, because you were saying so much. But, well, she did. But what's the cost of these things? What is going to be the general cost for...
Average market price?
Yeah.
We're thinking it would probably be about, start in the $300,000s, $300,000 range, which is, oh, sorry.
I'm sorry. It's what, 2,000 square feet?
Different size, I think 1,200 square feet and some. We can bring up if you want to ask very specifically our, the actual developer of the project who can give some stats if you wanted anything on bedroom counts or...
No, I was just trying to get a general idea of what the cost would be in the square footy. So it's about 1,200 and about $300,000.
So I think we have, sorry, average three bedrooms, 1,500 to 17,037 square feet.
Okay. And about 300,000?
$300,000, yes.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Member Stokoe.
Yes. My questions might either be for you or staff depending. I have a few. Traffic studies, do those, what do you do, what are you looking for with traffic studies? Are they more for infrastructure or is it really looking at how long are you sitting through a light? Do you guys look at that for traffic studies? I don't know who wants to answer that one.
Okay. So the way that the traffic studies are, and I, this is just not fun cocktail conversation, so this is information that nobody ever wants to hear, right? Because I'm the person who's like, well, there's not a traffic problem, and there is to the people who live here, so I can certainly appreciate that. The way that the studies are done is they analyze, again, the average daily trips, and the reason a city wants to look at that is because how many cars are coming out on the road, and can that road's level of service handle the additional, is there capacity for those new cars that come out? And if there is not capacity, can you mitigate it? So would a developer be required to build another lane? Would you have to widen lanes? Would you have to put deceleration lanes in? For example, if we were closer to, say, an intersection, would we be tripping a threshold to where we would have to work with, say, DOT to try to change timing on a signal at an intersection? So you do look at the capacity on the roads, infrastructure in place, what the width of the roadway is. They take into account impacted intersections adjacent to the project. So it's not just like the traffic engineer looks left and right at the entrance of our project, and that's all they analyze. They do look at other intersections where our cars would be going out to, to leave on a typical daily basis.
Yeah. And I guess what I'm getting at is, I feel like maybe it could hold those trips, but if most of these trips are happening, you know, when people are going to work, and then you guys are looking at a traffic study saying, through a 24-hour period of time, you know, accounting if everyone was equally distributed through the middle of the night, in the middle of the day, then maybe it would be okay, but that's not what's happening, I feel like.
And you're right. I think the peak hours are probably when you're experiencing them. So the traffic studies always look at, and your city would analyze this as well, when a traffic study goes through their formal vetting process. And it shows that you have a very low daily AM and PM peak hour. So again, 51 AM peak hour trips, and that's in and out, because not everybody leaves for work at the same time. But some come in, some coming out. So between that 7:00 and 9:00 window, you might have some parents coming back from dropping their kids off at school. You might have some folks leaving to go to work or run errands or do whatever it is they do. And at the PM peak hour, 4:00 to 6:00 PM, it's 60 trips that would be generated. That's a cumulative in-and-out trip count. And so, you know, while I understand that there's going to be traffic that's going to come either way, and I certainly was only bringing up the Florida statutory reference because we don't have a deficiency, you know? So usually, I'm like talking about roads where there is a deficiency, and then I have to be the bad guy to say, but even if there is, and we didn't cause it, you know, but this isn't even that case. So that statute doesn't even apply to us. But it covers that we don't even have a deficiency on these roads per the traffic study, per the concurrency analysis prepared by the city. So that road is designed to handle a lot of cars every day. It doesn't always conveniently handle those cars. And any developer has to work with the constraints we're given. And we are told to run studies based on ITE manual standards, based on the Space Coast MPO standards, and based on what the professional engineers are held to in design guidelines for their studies from the city and from the county as well. So we run those numbers, and they get independently evaluated. But those AM and PM peak hours are relatively low. It would be a lot higher if we did, you know, 200 units of multifamily. Certainly, multifamily is a much higher trip generator than the townhome project would be.
Okay.
If I could, excuse me. Concurrenty is not the only thing that matters. We also look at the design of the road and where there are traffic accidents and what could ameliorate the impact of this development on existing situations. So we, our traffic engineer will look at the traffic study that's provided, and it will not just be, concurrency is important, and that's the low threshold you have to meet. If there's no concurrency, then you have one issue, but the other issue is like design and line of sight and that type of thing.
Like looking at places of business, like the mayor was mentioning the SPCA and people trying to get in and out of there, and there's a line of cars.
Right. So according to our traffic, the gentleman who would review that, he said that if the traffic study shows that this particular development causes additional issues, then they will have to figure out how to reduce their impact on those problem areas. But that's a matter of traffic engineers talking to each other about that.
Yeah. And we couldn't proceed with our holding permits and building until that's done.
That's correct. We would not, the permit could not be issued.
Okay. My second question is, can you just clarify for me, the main reason that you are wanting to move the medium density to high density and the R2 to R3, is it strictly because the lot size of the 20, the lot width, the 24 to 20, is that the only thing?
Yes. And I know it seems like a lot of a process just to get a lot width, but that's why the binding concept plan is attached to it. So there's nothing else. You know exactly what we're giving you, 91 units, no more. It's a decrease in density guaranteed, because I could understand you don't want to increase the zoning and the future land use density allocations and just hope we stick to what we're saying. The binding concept plan forces us into that. And that's all we're doing.
And then my last two questions are for staff. So say they didn't develop with this binding agreement, and somebody inherits the piece of property, that binding agreement's attached with the piece of land, say they want to do something different, does the zoning and the future land use map ever revert back? Or what's the process of what would happen?
It stays in place until changed through the public hearing process by city council.
Okay.
So it runs with the land. It is not related to the owner.
Okay. And then looking at staff recommendation, it says here that basically, if we don't do the comp plan amendment and we don't do the rezoning, that staff is not objecting this plan and that they can go through with this, provided the lot dimensions are consistent. So does staff believe they can still do 91 lots at the 24-wit lot size?
Well, there's only 24 width on the very small portion to the east, because that's the five acres. So yes, we believe that you could put the additional four feet on each of those lots. But again, without a rezoning action, there's nothing to attach that binding plan to.
I see what you're saying. Interesting. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Yeah, just one other question. The land to the east is not part of this. Do you all own that also?
The, no. Is that across...
This is a flag lot, right?
Oh, let me go back to show you the, oh, you're on the screen, so I don't know how to...
I don't want to be on the screen. Don't want to be there.
Didn't know, didn't know how to change that back. Sorry.
That's better.
All right. I'll show you the site aerial. Let's see. So that shows you the entirety of the property. So the lot lines themselves sort of look like a flag?
Yeah. What's that number, is that a number two? I can't see it.
One and two just correspond to the different sizes of the different parcel IDs. You see, so there's just two different parcel IDs there. So the red, you still see the flag lot, that and the square right above it? Those are both this property.
Oh, the little square is part of it, too?
Yes. So it's not a flag lot. Yeah. So apologies. So that shows here the site on the entirety of that red square we just showed you.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Member Robinson.
Yes. Everything has been explained quite well, but I have, my issue is, is that road is only approximately a mile and a half long or two miles or more. And it is being fed from 50 as well as 405. And now you're going to feed it from all of the entry points along the way. Yes, it was built to handle all of that traffic. The road is designed is good. And, you know, if people are going at a certain pace, at a certain speed, and nothing is stopping them, traffic will never be a problem. But if you got to stop at one end and a stop at the other end, two mile and a half to two miles long, and it's, you start at one end, it's going to be a traffic mess between those peak hours that you speak of from 7:00 to 9:00 as also from 4:00 to 6:00, because you're going to have people coming in, people going in, and people coming out. Then you have to look at it and say, how, from the feeder points, from 50 and from 405, how many more cars are going to get on that? Yes, you're not going to cause a problem, but it's all of those other people coming in that are not counted, is my concern.
And again, I think that you guys have addressed it. You know it's a concern. You may be watching it. Again, being there, I can tell you that, you know, as Member Robinson is saying, you got Denise Drive there coming in from Imperial Estates, you got Marji coming in from the condos and the townhouses and Imperial Estates, you got Wendy Lee coming in from Imperial Estates. And most of them are coming this way because, as you noted, Sisson can get you to 405 or 50. So I just think it's something to be aware of. That's really about all I can say right now.
And I appreciate, and I appreciate that your staff mentioned, too, they will undergo that independent review. It's sort of like school concurrency. If we don't have seats to put the kids, short of being able to mitigate, we can't pull permits, right? So if we can't give you, if we can't meet concurrency for transportation, we can't pull permits. So we're going to be stuck. If we can not prove to your staff after they do an analysis during the site plan and permitting review process, we wouldn't be able to move forward if we could not properly account for the cars that are generated from this trip. That's true, even if we didn't do this project, anybody who developed the site would be bound to that.
Well, I appreciate that. Are there any more questions from council at this time? I see none. Thank you so much for an outstanding presentation with lots of information. I see, again, nothing there. Call the cards, please.
Catherine Spurn.
Pull her down. Boop. Hold on, better.
My tiptoes. My name is Catherine Spurn. I live at 5380 Wendy Lee Drive. And I was very pleased to hear that they were going to try to make the site align as you pull out of Marji better, because it, I hate turning left on Sisson. But I do have a concern about gopher tortoises that are on that property and how that will be, how that will be taken care of, because I have seen gopher tortoises on that property, and I'm, so I'm sure, I know that there are some.
Okay.
So that's my question.
She can certainly address that as she comes back up at the end, but I also know there are state laws that would mandate that they mitigate them and move them. But I will let her address that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next card.
Last card is Dan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, former engineer with City Titusville. And I'd like to any one to disagree with you is that I believe that Sisson Road is a county road. Sisson Road is a county road. So I know that 20 years ago, since I worked for the city, is that the county says that that road is going to be enlarged and it is planned to be widened. I heard no mention about that at all. Nothing. And I'm surprised to say this traffic study was done by the city. Is anybody listening to the county? And let me, let me say something else. People don't like me to do that because they don't want to hire me because I say some things. And in this case, I want to say is that, is that while I worked for the city, the city was supposed to coordinate with the county on projects on county roads. And the city did what? What did the city do? The city bungled and bungled and bungled. Where did they bungle? On Sisson Road repeatedly, repeatedly. Did not, and when they did site plans and so forth, did not contact the county. Same on Old Dixie. Old Dixie is a county road. What did the city do on a number of projects? Bungled. Didn't get driveway permits. On Gerson Road, what has the city done on Gerson Road? Bungled. Didn't get permits from the county when they did the projects. I can't believe it. So in this case, I'm having a hard time believing it says traffic study done by the city and the level of service and so forth like that, when the county is the one who's looking at this road also. The county wants right-of-way. The county needs right-of-way. Nothing was mentioned on this project tonight about right-of-way. And by the way, that lady, which she did a wonderful job, she used these overhead projectors, which, which you won't allow us to do. I know many city people from the City Titusville come and say, I'm going to present my, on overhead projector, like the presentation, and the county and the city manager, what does he say? No. What does he say? No. No again and again and again. He says, we can't pick for security reasons and so forth and viruses, we can't, we're not allowed to use it. But she got to use it. That's not good. So this, something is wrong with our government. First of all, okay, I said about the overhead projection, but the thing is, is you're supposed to do, let me say, the planning department is supposed to coordinate with the city on Sisson Road. I don't see that you've done it. I don't know what's going on. I'm speaking as an engineer. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you. I at least have to add, the presentation part is a quasi-judicial. An applicant makes a presentation, and that's how that works. So we talked more, yeah. That rolls. Anybody else have a card? Could the applicant come back up? And that's how it works too, the applicant comes back up at the end. So come on up applicant, because there's at least one thing you need to address, that would be the question about turtles.
And any gopher tortoises, as you had noted, have to be removed from a property in accordance with state guidelines. So FDEP would regulate, and as part of the permitting process too. So tonight is just zoning is an entitlement, so after tonight, we would have to go through the process to pull permits which would necessitate an environmental review, traffic review, school concurrency review. And again, all of those boxes have to be checked and reviewed by the city prior to us being able to pull any permits for development. So we would have to account for any protected species. And the city did not run the traffic study, just to clarify, the, the city produced concurrency analysis. We independently had a traffic study that was prepared using county guidelines and would have to be reviewed by the county as well, for us to pull any permits to a county road.
Thank you very much, one, uh, Member Stokoe.
The question's for staff. Peggy, say somebody was coming in right now that owned this property, wasn't wanting a land use change or a rezoning, what would the process be for the applicant to go through because it's already zoned a certain way? What would they have to do?
They could just come in for a site plan if they wanted to put in a traditional three-story multifamily.
Would they have to do the traffic study?
They would.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? I see none. Staff, anything you want to add? Uh, Vice Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, council, I move that we approve ninety small-scale comprehensive plan, SSA number two dash twenty-two, Sisson Town Homes.
I have, I have a motion from Vice Mayor, a second from Member Stokoe, roll call vote.
Right, there's two ordinances here, first is land use and the zoning, so I'd ask that you.
Come again, I'm sorry?
So first, I would ask for an approval if, if that's your motion, ordinance number nineteen twenty-two, and then a separate motion and vote on ordinance twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
Okay, well, I'll start with the.
Okay, Vice Mayor, can you amend that?
Yes. Okay, so I move that we approve small-scale comprehensive plan, SSA number two dash twenty-two, with ordinance number nineteen dash twenty-two.
I would do that vote first, if there's a second.
I'm gonna make sure the second holds, second still hold?
Yes.
I've got the motion from Vice Mayor, the second, and it holds from Member Stokoe, roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Let me verify, excuse me, let me, let me verify, we are talking about what concept plan?
Correct, yes.
Okay, yes.
Definitely.
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes, a motion passes unanimously?
Mr. Mayor, and council, I move that we approve ordinance number twenty dash twenty-two.
Second.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor, a second from Member Nelson.
And again, that is the rezoning which has the concept plan attached to it.
With the concept plan, yes.
Roll call vote.
Member Stokoe? Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously? We move forward. We will move forward. City Manager?
Yes, sir, we are on ten A, which is a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment, number one dash twenty-one for Windover at Windsong. This is the first reading of SSA one dash twenty-one, the city attorney will read for the record.
Ordinance number twenty-one twenty-two, an ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances by amending ordinance number sixty nineteen eighty-eight, which adopted the comprehensive plan of the City of Titusville. Amending this future land use map by changing the land use designation on approximately thirteen acres of property located on the south side of Columbia Boulevard, State Road four oh five, just west of Windover Way, parcel ID number twenty-two thirty-five thirty-two zero zero nine, from conservation to commercial low-intensity future land use, to conservation, commercial, low-intensity, and low-density residential future land use designations, and providing for an effective date. Ordinance number twenty-two twenty-two. An ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending ordinance number five nineteen ninety-three of the City of Titusville, by amending the zoning map made a partisan ordinance by reference, by changing the community commercial CC and open space and recreation OR zoning districts to the community commercial CC, open space and recreation OR, and single-family medium-density residential R one B zoning districts on approximately thirteen acres plus or minus of property located on the south side of Columbia Boulevard, State Road four oh five, just west of Windover Way, parcel ID number twenty-two thirty-five thirty-two zero zero nine, and providing for an effective date.
On twenty April twenty twenty-two, the Planning and Zoning Commission, acting as the local planning agency, recommended denial six one. The reasons provided were that the two houses can already be built in the OR zoning district, and that they, that R one B zoning is too intense, and there were concerns about the impacts to trees. And Ms. Busak is here to answer any questions on this, your first reading of small-scale one dash twenty-one.
Ms. Busak, and then you want to set the table with?
I had not intended to make a presentation since this is only first reading, and if I need to enter evidence into the record, I'll do so at the public hearing.
Okay, this is, uh, let me go ahead and say how this would work. We had, we had the, had it read, and then staff, we can discuss with staff, I will ask council if everything they want to say, and then we go to cards. And then we will hear you. And the main thing here is, for me, is not, you know, and, and it could go a hundred, I mean, whatever's gonna go, it's gonna go. But the main thing here, I think, is for us up here to hear and understand what the concerns are, where, you know, everything we can understand about this. Now, clearly, if, if you didn't, you're one of the few probably, but I got enough emails that I have a really good idea where people sit, and what they're thinking. A lot. And, and I learned a lot, and that's what I want to do tonight. So I don't want to get, and, and to end, there is no vote tonight. Nothing happens tonight, we're going to hear you, and I want to hear you in the way that I know you are, and that's, you know, solid citizens. I was gonna say solid citizens of Titusville, but that's a little bit off, by a matter of feet in some cases. But that being said, it is an issue we need to deal with, and on, on both sides, because there certainly is another side out there, and I want to hear both sides. But I don't want to get caught up in, you know, and again, I'm, I'm kind of hoping if it starts to get to be about eleven, and you've heard everything you're gonna say in your card, don't feel like you've got to repeat it. And if it comes out the fourteenth time, just say, okay, I won't. But really, what I want to get across is, we just want to hear. And again, I don't know that I'm gonna get anything brand new here, because again, I, I literally, I don't know how many, but I got a bunch of emails, and I know you guys probably did too. Um, with that, Vice Mayor Jordan, you want to add something?
I do. I, I need you all to hear my heart, because I honestly do not want to hear from a hundred and fifty people. Honest to God, I don't. First of all.
Relax, relax.
Can you hear me now? Now you can hear me.
Nevermind, go ahead.
Now I have to repeat myself. I, I, I don't want to hear from a hundred and fifty people, I know where you stand. Can I get a, a hand, I, I need everybody to raise a hand that says they don't want this to happen. That's all I need. I do not need you to get up there and tell me you don't want this a hundred and fifty times. And so I'm asking you, if you've got someone who can get up and concisely tell us what you don't like about this thing, then please just have that person get up, and we'll give them extra time. But to have a hundred and fifty people, honest to goodness, when the sun goes down for me, my brain goes down. Honest to God, and I, and I think most of you are the same way for sure. I know you would rather be doing something else, but I also know that you're very concerned about this area, and, and I don't blame you. The rules say that you get three minutes to say whatever you want. So I'm not gonna stop you from doing it, I'm just gonna let you know, as a human being, as a council member, I am not slow. I know what no means. So I don't need each person to get up in a different flavor, tell me no. So if you all have a spokesperson who wants to talk for a hundred fifty of you, of the people, then please let that happen, and please, not everybody get up and say the same thing, we don't want it, we already know that. And I do read my emails, I got enough of those. And I did something I, I really don't like doing, I reviewed planning and zoning video. So I heard a lot of this stuff, and I don't need to hear it again, and some of the same people who were there, I'm sure are gonna be here and gonna say the same thing. So I think everyone up here is very intelligent, we know what no means. But as the mayor said, please know, we can't say to you, yeah, we agree with you, or we disagree with you. We may or may not, but what we have to do is listen to what you have to say. And we will not vote tonight, we cannot vote tonight. This is the first hearing, actually, I would have rather seen you all at the next meeting instead of this meeting, because then there could be somewhat of a discussion. But tonight, you're here, so please, let's just keep it shorter than longer, if you don't mind. I'm not trying to be mean at all, just don't want to hear no too many times, I'm trying to be mean.
All right. Yeah, I'm surprised by that too, but I'm gonna take it a step further because, and I'm not gonna ask for a show of hands, but there is another side. And there's a group back there that is in favor of this, that's why we're here. And, and again, I think I, I said it clearly, and Vice Mayor followed it up, and I had a couple lights up, but I think we've all said it now. We're, we're just, we've been through these before, and it's, the frustrating part is, Vice Mayor said, is, it's when we start to hear the same thing over and over, and it gets to be nine thirty, and they're literally at nine thirty, he, he closes his computer, no, he does not. But, but basically, we just want to hear, we want to know, and again, with all the emails we've gotten, all the, you guys are on it. But there's two sides here, I want to hear them both, and I want to go from there. I had talked earlier about, although Vice Mayor kind of jumped in there on us, we have always been willing to have somebody present, and when we've done that, we give, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty minutes. But what we can't do if we're gonna do that, is then we have sixty-two people say, I want to say my part too. So in some cases, some people just want to say their part, and they don't really care that they've said the same thing twenty times. So at this point, I'm ready to have the cards called. I don't, you know, normally when something like that happens where you guys have somebody to speak for you, it was pre-planned, and we have somebody that can step up, and we say, hey, we'll give you fifteen minutes if you can represent all the people, and maybe there's a few more things that, that could be, be done. Do we have something like that going on, that someone can represent you? Well, I, I, let me, let me show a show of hands, do we have somebody that can represent you here to get started? You're for that? All right, let's see, now we got a yeah, but already. So. Well, if I go more than fifteen minutes, and then all of a sudden they say, I didn't like what she said, now I want to talk, and I've got twenty-seven more people still want to go. I, I could go, um, okay, I'm gonna go this way, and then I'm gonna make some executive decisions here. I'm gonna have her go first, because I had a nice majority of hands say she represents you. She talked to me, she came to a previous meeting even, and kind of gave us an idea what she was gonna say. So, and Sandy was there somewhere. Yes, okay, I, I can go with that, who's going?
Mayor, we would want to have the applicant for those in favor first. The applicant, those are their four first.
Okay, okay.
And all, call all the cards, and I would suggest on those four, and then those against, so you don't mix it.
I, I'm, I'm good with that, but I, and I'm not gonna debate that, but I just asked you that earlier, do we go with an applicant first, and you said not in this one?
Yeah, no, the, the question was, is, right, about quasi judicial and all that.
All right, right.
But I'm telling you, in this case, I would have all the four cards, so I don't know if the clerk has flagged them up or not.
We'll do that, I'm gonna stop, ask questions. All right, with that, we're gonna go with the four first, and then we will go with the two, we'll, we'll talk about you guys in a minute. Let's go with the four first, and, and thank you for your cooperation, that's probably the most discussion we ever had to figure out how we're gonna do this. All right, thank you. The four people, and we're gonna be respectful, and do the things you do as respectful. I gotta tell you, warmed my heart and gave me hope when you clapped for those kids today, so. All right, so come on up with the four, I, the, are you guys gonna come up? Well, you can, she's got about a hundred and fifty cards up there, I don't know if she wants to go through them, I know you're a four, so why don't we just start with you? Do you have them separated? Not enough. That's why I asked.
Jason Wright, fifty-one twenty-one Bridge Road, Cocoa, Florida.
All right, one last thing before we get started, sometimes you get, and I'll get him to talk louder, because some people are doing this already. Sometimes when you get caught up in something like this, it's like you want to tell your neighbor this, and you tell your neighbor that, let's, let's be quiet while they're talking. Okay, yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I need clarification, is part of this quasi judicial?
Small-scale amendments are legislative.
That means not.
The rezoning, the rezonings are quasi, but the comp plan amendment itself is legislative, but we're following these procedures of the applicant first, and then those.
And I'm fine with that, following that, but it's not quasi, it is legislative.
Comp plan changes are legislative.
All right, so, let's restart, thank you, go ahead, name and address for the record, make sure you're in the microphone.
Jason Wright, fifty-one twenty-one Bridge Road, Cocoa, Florida.
And I'm Megan Wright, fifty-one twenty-one Bridge Road, Cocoa, Florida. So we are here tonight again, we went before planning and zoning last week. I'm encouraged after hearing that you guys are pro-development with the other ninety-one townhouses, and we are trying to build two homes in Windover. So we have gotten a lot of feedback from the neighborhood, they're concerned with our potential zoning, because our zoning request is allowing us to move our property to maneuver around trees. We are trying not to take out trees, and we are not building on the wetlands, so we are not impacting those two things. With that being said, the property itself is a very unique property with a very, very funky area that you can build inside of. So we are requesting the, the zoning that we are, because we need the minimum setbacks on the sides. We have a survey that we can provide to you that shows where we are tentatively placing the houses at, so we can give that to you this evening, if you would like that. I, I will say this, we, planning and zoning, that, that meeting was a little frustrating, people spoke, it was a four-hour-long meeting, people spoke about us that have never said a word to us, never even said, hi, my name is. And they come up and present information about us, which I suspect will happen tonight as well. And I just want you guys to know that that's not, the things they're saying are not true. That's not who we are, that's not, they don't know us at all, I mean, we, I serve on, I sit on the board of directors at the Grove Church. My husband, he is a coach for Little League, we own businesses, we have grown up in Brevard County, I graduated from Titusville High, been here, local, homegrown, as they come. We are not developing that into anything other than two single-family residents on five-acre parcels, that is all we are doing. We've got a lot of feedback from the community, the main concern being that if we were to sell it, or if something were to happen, the land use change would stay with the land, and we understand that, but our intention is to build a home, and if you walk down that what-if aisle, you can what-if yourself into literally never doing anything. We're telling you what is, this is our intention, we've moved forward with planning, we have, our, our site plans are done, our engineer plans, and he knows those terms better than I do. But that is why we are here tonight, so. Oh, Jackie's the survey, so. And then we'll answer any questions that you guys have as well, so.
Let me ask one right off the, the bat here, you talked about you want to just build two homes.
Yes, sir.
I've gotten a lot of emails that aren't for any homes, but I've gotten a lot of emails that said, two homes would be fine.
Yes.
I got one email, so I can tell I read them, that said, on page eighty-four and eighty-five of the agenda packet, there's a subdivision title in there.
And that is an issue, I, I emailed to staff today, I, it says Windsong at Windover, that's the previous owners, they don't own that property, we own the property, it's under Megan and Jason Wright. So I emailed Brad today, actually, and asked him, hey, what is this, why does this say this? And he said that he can't get it corrected in time for the meeting tonight, but he will correct it. So it's had the wrong name.
Okay, that, you can understand the concern with that.
Absolutely, because that's, it was, came to my attention as well.
The second thing that I have seen in some emails was the possibility of would you be willing to enter into a written agreement that we're only gonna put two houses there? I've understood, I understand that has been proposed and been rejected.
That, no, that has not been rejected, so at this point, no, we, I'm not saying that, no, we won't do that, I'm saying I would ask, we have an attorney at this point, so we would have to consult with her beforehand, just to make sure that that is the proper channel to go through.
All right, and again, just coming from the emails, there are those, and I won't say majority, and I don't want a show of hands or anything else, but there are some that said, if it was just two homes, I'm good.
I know.
But there's a lot of them that say, but we can't, you know, they're not seem to want to commit to just the two homes. And, and I get that, and I understand talking to your attorney, but if you're out here, you might say, you really can't commit to the two-home thing.
No, we, we are building two homes, that is what we're building, the commercial part of it, I, that's different, obviously, the commercial end of it is commercial, so that isn't the same. There is, I guess my hesitancy is this, if you look back there, we have three boxes full of history on this property, I mean, binders after binders after binders, there is so much information. And so we know what the previous owner went through, and we know what the neighborhood had done, something very similar to what we are going through right now. So I have some hesitancy with trust issues there based on the documentation that I have from these exact same people that have done the exact same thing. So they wanted us to do the conditional use permit. Conditional use permit, I will not do, because I don't know what the conditions are, so for me, that seems like that is, that's too risky to say. And at that point, the community, I understand, does have a say in what those conditions could be. So we are the only property inside of that Windover subdivision that will be a City of Titusville resident, everyone else in there is county property. We are the only ones that are in the City of Titusville. It was annexed into the City of Titusville with the idea of forty-four townhomes being built on it, that was the original plan for it. That's not what we're doing, we're building two single-family homes. So, which, oh, that's, that is, again, validating the fact that we've spent thousands and thousands of dollars at this point moving forward with building our home.
All right, uh, Member Nelson?
Yeah, um, I was looking at this, I have to find out where I am again. And I'm assuming everything in green.
In the green, that is the wetlands, and that will stay, oh, that's gonna stay OR.
Okay, and then it looks like you're twenty-seven feet, I'm assuming that, I'm not sure which house is yours.
I know.
House here and the house there.
Those two.
Okay.
Right.
And so there you would be either twenty-five or thirty feet from the wetlands? And so there you would be either twenty-five or thirty feet from the wetlands.
Uh, yes, that, yes.
Okay, and the other house would be twenty-seven feet from the wetlands. I don't know, Mayor, has Spitzlacka seen this?
I, I haven't.
No, she has not.
But I can tell you that typically the water management district has buffers of about fifteen feet from wetlands. If you were to get a, a permit, that's the typical. Now, the water management district may have other decisions based on other wetlands, but my understanding is that the DEP would be the, the regulatory agency for the single-family house. And if you're not requesting a permit, then they would not have review over that. So they're not, if, if they do not intend to go into the wetland area, then DEP would not have any say. But the permits that I have seen recently issued by these regulatory agencies typically use fifteen feet as a setback.
Okay, so they're well setback from the wetlands.
Right. Conditional use permit is fifty feet and that is, so that's significantly larger based on if you can see where we can build at. It's a very funky shape there.
And then the other thing I see is it looks like, and I may be wrong, but you're coming in.
There's a power line easement that's already currently there that's being used by the power line company, so we're going to be use that same as our driveway. So we're not going to impact the entranceway. That's one of the other major concerns that the neighborhood has expressed, that we're going to take trees down at the entranceway, which we absolutely one-hundred percent are not. We love the entranceway. Two houses. Right, it's the same power line easement on that survey, yes.
Yes, sir.
And it also looks like there's a fair amount of trees that you've left between the driveway and Windover Way.
Yes. We wouldn't touch them even if we could. We like that entranceway.
Hold up real quick. When you speak, you move over because they can't hear you.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but I don't, I don't want to see people, really, to be honest with you. I go, I go home, I mean, I do a lot of community work, but when I go home, I want to be by myself. And, and that's the whole reason we have ten acres there between the two families of us is to kind of just right, raise our kids, be, be decompress. And, and I don't, I don't, I want to cut down as little trees as possible. I, I want it to be like Ocala National Forests, the, you know, where we go camping. It's just beautiful there and that's the way we want to keep it. I mean, the only reason we were doing that was to try to avoid cutting down trees and I know it kind of raised alarms. Um, but again, we really, in the very beginning, tried to sit down and negotiate this to, oh, we might do our, our, might do RE, might do, um, whatever. And it was the same representatives, they're going to speak. No.
OR.
OR or nothing, and then they walked out of the room. So, um, at that point, then, if I'm going to have to fight it, I'm going to fight it for the least amount of setback so that I don't have to touch any of the trees.
Right, overall, overall, we want to keep the big trees. We don't want to drop any of the major large trees and that property has significant trees on it. So it, it makes it difficult for our area to be able to build in where we can build and not take down trees.
And I realize that, or I understood that part of the reason for the zoning change was so that you would have a different setback and you might be able to move around some of the trees.
Correct.
Correct.
Um, I think most of the problem is people are wanting assurances that there will only be two houses there. So I think that's something that you need to talk to your attorney about, see.
Okay.
See if we can work something out.
The other thing is, would it be possible, is it possible to make a request that our second reading happens on June fourteenth so that our legal counsel can be present?
City Attorney.
Sure, you can have a request to table to a time certain.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah.
Member Stokoe.
Okay, to clarify, um, as it stands right now, with the conditional use permit, that would not be effective for you for the sole reason of the setbacks, the fifty-foot setbacks.
Well, there's two things that are happening there. If you'll see the, um, the commercial land right now, we're actually reducing the amount of commercial and asking that to be put into residential for that middle lot, that area there. Um, we need additional residential space there so that we're able to build the house. Otherwise, there would be no way to enter in there without going through.
Okay, so you're reducing the commercial.
We're reducing the commercial down exactly, increasing the residential.
Okay, that makes sense. And then to Member Nelson's point, I think, just kind of what you saw with our previous with the Cisson development, we had some concerns about the density and whatnot. Now, if you watch that process, they're locked in at ninety-one units, um, where I think everyone ended up happy. So I feel like if you were to talk to your attorney about having some type of concept plan that potentially locks something in, I feel like that would potentially be something that would be doable.
Okay.
So that would be my recommendation.
Uh, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. Because that's where I was going. I, I really want this to be a win-win. The, the thing that concerns me is you've got all these people who are going to be your potential neighbors.
Oh, believe me. It's made me question, do we want to really move here? I don't know.
Well, you know, and, and I think you're good people, um, for sure, but, you know, I don't want you to be out there and.
Yeah.
No man's land by yourself and people are blowing their horns or they pass by you and all that good stuff.
Let's hope that doesn't happen.
Well, we're, and, and that's where we're trying to get. We, we really need to come up with a compromise because you do own the land. You have rights. But I also have read from a lot of the neighbors that there were some things that was written down, what was promised to them when they brought their property and they want to keep it that way. So their fear, their fear, because there is no documentation, is that potentially there could be more out there than what you were saying. And so there's a lack of trust. And, and you said it yourself, a lot of people haven't talked to you.
Right.
Know you, right?
Right.
So, um, I'm with, um, Councilwoman, um, Stokoe, if, just like, um, what the first applicant said about a binding plan.
Mm-hmm.
I think that would go a long way in alleviating the problems that you are having. A binding plan, something that's written that nobody, and, and once we get this, if we get to this point where we approve this,
Mm-hmm.
then if anybody else comes along and buy the land from you, something happened, God forbid, you can't build on it.
Right.
Then they would have to come through the same process also. To me, that would alleviate any concerns that the neighbors would have.
Right.
They have no prob, from what I read, they have no problem with you building two homes.
Mm-hmm.
They have a problem with multi-homes being in there.
Right.
Without any assurances that that's not what you're going to do.
Right.
Right? That makes sense, right?
Yes, I understand.
So I'm, I'm, I'm with, um, a member, uh, Jolene, that if you can get with your attorney, because I really want this to work out for everybody, you know? We don't need this.
No, believe me, it's been an eye-opener.
Do this for sure, so.
I have, I have one question for, for City Attorney on, is, we, we were, um, tabling it. Is that still the second reading? That it would, that would still be the second reading?
Currently, it's advertised for the public hearing, second reading for the next council meeting.
Right.
If you decide that you would like it tabled, then they would take that action at the next meeting to table it to a time certain, because it's already advertised for that meeting.
Right.
So if you or your attorney submit, if we table it to within thirty days, we don't, or to a time certain, we do not re-advertise.
Okay.
That's why I thought so. It's that second, what's the date in May then? Right, so if you go to the first meeting in June, we would not have to re-.
A couple of questions for you.
Understanding.
If you don't get this, what's the next step?
We're going to sell the land. Uh, that would be the next step. I mean, honestly, if we can't build on it, then it doesn't really hold any value to us. We're trying to build our home there, so. That's, that would ultimately be what would happen. I mean, not what we want to do. It's not. We're trying to avoid that. We bought it not with that intention at all. We want to build there. But if we can't build there, then we're going to sell it.
I know, I know you want to say something. I.
Well, which, which, which ultimately would lead us down the same path.
Yeah, you'd be right back there.
It's been happening over year after year after year. Um, it, it seems like a waste to me, um, because this has been going on, the, the poor woman we bought the property for had, I mean, it, it.
Yeah.
It was, I have four cases of stuff that's been going on with this for years back here. And it's just, I would like to see it end. Um, uh, I mean, it just, it's going to reinvent itself going over and over with you guys. There are another city council down the, down the way, so.
Vice Mayor, just to confirm, you're saying the same thing that I started with when I asked them if they'd be willing to sign that they would just do too? Because, because I'm, you know, I started with that. I, the first got an email, kind of surprised me that, uh, several emails said, well, we'd be fine if that's what they would do.
Right.
And so that's why that was the first thing I wanted to say, because I too would like a win-win. And now I've kind of heard it around, around the table up here. Um, but I agree, I'm certainly fine with you talking to your attorney on that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I'm not going to go any further with that one, but I'd kind of like to have you guys saying, you know what, you know, that's what we're going to do. There's no reason for us not to be able to commit to that because that's all we really want to do.
Right, it is.
I think the one thing that, um, Vice Mayor brings up that, that is important is that, well, then if you sell the land, what happens? You know, so that, that, you might agree to it, but what happens next? And that's, that could be a concern. Um.
See, that was answered by staff, though.
Yeah.
You have to come back.
Right, we still have to come back, but that, the, these folks are thinking they're back in that fight. Uh, Member Nelson.
Oh, I was going to say, yeah, if they sold the land or something happened ten years down the road, somebody could come back. But if we put in the recitals, I'm hoping your attorney would think about this, that these are the reasons we're doing it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, then it's going to be harder for a council to come in and say, we don't care what they did ten years ago.
Right.
We don't want, care what everybody wanted and agreed to. So it's going to be really hard for them to turn around and come back.
To clarify, when you said what, if we don't get what we want, what are we going to do? When I said sell the land, that means if we can't develop, like, build our houses. So if we can't build our houses, we're going to sell. This is, our intention is for this to be our forever home. So we're not trying to sell the house. Now, granted, again, we don't know what's going to happen in the future. That's what, you know, and I understand that.
Oh, no, no, I understand. You were saying, no, sir, you're going, because I'm saying, well, yeah, okay.
I'm like, no, 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 my intention is not to sell it. We're not trying to build a house.
I understand that.
We want to move there.
Say, you know, a hundred years ago from now, you're.
I'll be long gone. I won't care about any of this.
Well, I'll be gone.
Yeah.
But, you know, something happens, the kids get it and they go to sell it. It would be hard for somebody to come back in and say, oh, we changed our minds.
Right.
Right.
So that's, that's what we're.
Are you still related?
Yeah, one other question for you.
Yes.
I thought I read in one of the emails or maybe I've seen it somewhere, um, is this your brother or your?
It is my brother and his wife. They're here tonight. They're present as well.
And they're okay with what you're trying to do?
Yeah, so we, everything, yes, I mean, they're present, so they'll, their cards will be pulled, but yes, so we run all this.
Because I thought there was a, a question of.
So, yeah, one of the issues was figuring out, because we were like building time. We're moving ahead as though this is going through and we're going to be building. They're not going to start building immediately, not as quick as we are going to be building. So when they were asking about a plot plan or a potential site plan, we weren't on the same timeline. And so then we got together between last week and this week and said, okay, like, where potentially do you want to put this house? We got to figure this out because, um, obviously this is something that you guys are asking for and you would like to see, so.
But there, there's a minimum requirement for the house size, right?
There is, yes, sir.
Okay, and I thought that was one of the.
That was one of the issues, so it was, because I, I believe, um, but I think it's, I have to go through them. I have it in my books, but is it twelve hundred square feet? I think it is. Peggy, would you know?
It is twelve hundred.
Okay, all right, I was like, I'm going.
For the R1B.
Right, right, so there, with our house, it's not going to be an issue, but I, and I don't think, I don't think the twelve hundred, they're going to build a house larger than twelve hundred square feet, so.
Okay, so everything's fine on the family side?
Yes, sir, in that timeline, they're not talking about building ten years down in the future either. We're talking about like exponential, um, construction costs at this present time. Um, we're talking about, there's other factors. I mean, they would plan, they would love to build probably tomorrow if, if they could dig into the ground and everything was as cheap as it was two years ago. Um, but they're, but, and, and, but I'm not saying it's going to be fifteen years down the road either, which is just some sort of a compromise with, with costs and.
Okay, well, you, you, you resolved that and that to me was a big challenge in my mind, that, you know, you had someone who didn't want this, right?
Yeah, I know, so our timelines didn't, they weren't a hundred percent and they're still not a hundred percent the same, on the same track. But I'm just trying to get a general when, where, you know, where are you going to put this house, that stuff, so that's what we were trying to, to hammer out, which you did.
Thank you.
I think we're almost ready to move on from this, but I do want to add, uh, as you saw, PNZ was in denial.
Yes.
Because even the one thing they stated was you could build the two houses you want right now without having to do this.
But not with, so the, the reason that we can't do it with the CUP though is because of that fifty-foot setback. So that's why they were asking, where is this house going to be at, which is why we had to, to come up with the survey to show. There's no way to do it with a fifty-foot setback from that wetland line. There's no way.
And, and conditional, you said, the last one, they needed a stormwater this and stormwater that, there's, uh, uh, a conditional use permit puts us in a lot of unknowns. Um, I, I mean, I've watched some of these recently. I've been catching up on these. I'm, I'm more than, I have more hours than I wanted to watch. Um, but I do know CUP is kicking the can a little bit further down the road. We don't know what, what those conditions would be.
Right.
With, with those rezoning, it's, okay, now I can put my plans in, now I, I'm good to go and, and, um, it, now it's up to staff as to whether I have the right building plans and whatnot and it's, we're, we're ready to go. It's not down the road.
Yeah, and, and, and I can see where you're saying that, and, and again, I'm going back to, I don't want to say hundreds, but it seemed like hundreds of emails and some folks who were, looked like they were almost looking for a win-win. Hey, they can build their two houses. We're good with that. It's the potential for the fifty-two houses or, you know, whatever, that's a real concern. And, and, and truthfully, you know, the, if we're ever to get a win-win, it's going to be a two-way street with two hands out. And, um, I don't know where we're at with that. So right now, uh, anything else you guys want to add right now?
No, sir.
No, I would agree with that and I would like to thank everybody for coming out for my wife's birthday.
Oh, yeah, it's my birthday tonight. Oh, yeah, so hopefully everybody will be kind of nice, right? Yeah. I'm like, we're going to have my birthday tonight at City of Titusville. Come on down and, uh, yeah.
You know what? These guys are filling a lot of roles. They came out and supported the high school kids. They're going to the birthday. Anyway, well, thank you very much and we may get back to you.
Thanks.
All right, uh, Counsel, uh, first of all, Staff, anything you want to add after that talk or that discussion?
I, I don't think so.
You're, you're going to work hard on that, aren't you?
Yes, sir.
Uh, uh, Counsel, are we good with moving on to, uh, one of the two presentations from the other side? Um, if you guys decided somebody wants to go first?
Yeah, we, we just want to confirm with the clerk, there's no more cards in favor of.
We have, um, twenty-one cards in favor.
Good call. We're going to continue on this route. You can fire me later. All right, come on, I want to go ahead and this way here. Uh, and then we can come back to the other cards in the back. I, I feel like I'd like to hear that side. Are we going to, do, do we want to have the twenty-one cards come up now?
The ones, and I, Clerk, how many cards do you have? Four?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
And again, do they, you could ask if they want to have a representative speak.
I thought we did. That's really what I thought we were doing, so I'm not trying to be, be cheesy here. I thought we had a representative from that side.
Okay.
And then a representative from this side.
We certainly asked. They may have some more information that they, that wasn't provided, that may be acceptable.
Question.
Say again, I'm sorry. Are, so are you still four?
Stern law.
All right, let's go ahead and bring another four and see if we can cut the twenty-one down to twelve.
Mayor, while she's coming up, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Okay, and this is maybe for City Attorney, since we don't have to go in the four and against order, I think what you're getting at is it would be nice to have the four, which you related, to hear you and then hear the against. And then that way, the fours don't have to feel like they have to come up now and they don't know what they're speaking for yet.
And, and if we could do that, which is where I thought we were, we have a representative.
Right.
And then I could have a representative from the other side. And if we needed to do that.
And then we can kind of go from there.
Representative, representative, five or six times than a hundred and twenty.
Correct.
So right now, this is more than fine. Thank you for being here.
Hi, I'm Jackie McLaughlin and I am the sister in the other house on that, um, property. I have done all.
I'm glad you're speaking then.
Yes, yes, and all, these are all our family and friends, so I am, they're saying they're donating time and I will make this really brief. Um, we, you're going to hear a lot tonight about us from people that do not know us. Uh, we are as homegrown as they come. I graduated from Titusville High School. I spent Friday nights, Friday Night Lights at Dray Field cheering for Coach Diesel, class of ninety-eight. I am a small business owner. My brother. My brother.
A coach with Jose Garcia though, over there, so there we go.
We own a, we own Accurate Metal Doors here in Titusville and I'm right down the street from Genesis Seven, who was my very first client when I started my business in twenty-two thousand, working for my dad. We, uh, I went to, again, Titusville High School, I was dual-enrolled and I used to come to the city council meetings for my state and local government at BCC. I mean, we are literally as homegrown as they come. We worship here. We help build the Grove with our tithe, with our bare hands. We are not, you saw what a developer looked like tonight. Everyone in this room, I'm just so incredibly blessed that she was before us because you saw the presentation, you saw the take a breath. You saw, I don't know what the traffic is like. We are, this is our home. We. We love Titusville. We are, we want to be here. We want to live here. We are not developers. We found this home, and I just want to touch on this really quick. Megan mentioned it. In all those boxes behind us, we have four decades of research regarding this property from the original annexation. I spent my weekends reading very boring council meetings and litigation and, and the history that, the battles that Titusville has fought. And that property was annexed to bring in 44 townhomes. Mr. Jack Eckert and Jim Swan were, that was the intent to build Windover Woods Townhomes. There's a lot that I sent to, talking to the, the NWI maps and how, where, where the comp plan came and wetland surveys and how OR, we started recognizing wetlands and things in, in the state of Florida. Our friends owned this property, family, friends, and they were bullied to the point of exhaustion and illness. We saw the opportunity, we see the bulldozers around Titusville, and we knew that if we did not buy this property, that the developer that you just heard from would. They would mow it down, they would burn it, they would pay the money to fill in the wetlands, and they would build townhomes. And these people behind me, they wouldn't have enough fight in them to fight all the money and all the lawyers and all the property ownership rights, and they, you can't eventually it give, we, we can't keep fighting it. And, I'm sorry, we, we just knew that this is where we wanted to build our homes. We worked with staff who's been absolutely amazing. The people in the City of Titusville have just been wonderful guiding us through this process. It's been a learning experience, and we thank you for your time. We thank you for your consideration for this, and I also ask that you look, listen with open ears and open hearts, what, what, you know, what we're here for, who we are, where we came from, and just keep that in mind as you make your decision over the next couple weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Obviously, I'm thinking I'd like to go to, yes, thank you, I'm glad, I got a, I got a nod. So what I like to do, and certainly if you are still a four, I'm not, don't necessarily have to be done here, but personally, I think I'm getting a whole lot more out of this than if we got three minutes of people saying, I really am. So let's go to, which one are you going to go first? She's moving first, here we go. Well, come on, let's go. Name an address for the record and then do what you best.
Yes, sir. My name is Sandra Klinger. I live at 2680 Bobcat Trail, Windover Farms. I want to tell you a little bit about my background. I have a master's degree in coastal resource management. That's a land use planning degree, but my degree was focused more on protecting the resources in the coastal zone that gets the most development. So I used it for wildlife conservation, planning more than land use planning. But that is my background. So some of this should make you happy. I'm going to start by saying, this is our position. We support the applicant building two single-family homes on the 10 acres, one home per five acres each, with the existing OR zoning and conservation land use with a CUP. We would much rather be here in support of the applicant requesting a CUP than fighting a completely inappropriate rezoning and land use change. We've encouraged the applicant to revise their application to retain OR and pursue a CUP that would both achieve their stated development goal, sorry, I'm about to get laryngitis.
That's okay.
Address the concerns of our community and protect the environmental sensitivity of the property. As a show of good faith, the Windover Farms residents have offered to reimburse the applicant the fees the city charges for two CUPs if they would pursue that course. How many times have you heard the opposition offer to pay the fees associated with the development? We do not object to the applicant's submitted plot plan that creates two five-acre parcels, straightens and adjusts the boundary between the CC and OR zoning to conform to the northern most lot line of parcel B on their block plan. This also moves more uplands from the community commercial into the OR. We have no objection so long as the zoning remains OR on parcels B and C. We strenuously object to the requested rezoning and land use change from OR to R1B or any other zoning district that allows an increase in permitted development density and permitted other uses on this environmentally sensitive property with both high-quality connected wetlands and old-growth forest with an intact canopy. The applicant seeks to increase development density permitted, would be by right on that property, to no less than 25 times the existing permitted development density on that property. This is confusing because the development density allowed under OR is consistent with their stated development goal of two homes on 10 acres. Our community, the, the portion of the property that they are slated to rezone is inside, is inside the entrance to our community and sits all, has frontage along Windover Way and our forested entrance. Our community will be the most affected by whatever development happens on this property. We will be presenting evidence supporting denial based upon the following. A litany of policies established in the LDRs and comprehensive plan with future land use element, we have found 11 places that it is inconsistent. In the conservation element, 13 places. Criteria for review that you are to use in reviewing this application that's established in the review procedures manual, or the development review procedures manual. The history of zoning actions by the city council, upholding and reaffirming the existing land use and zoning on the OR, OR portion of the property along Windover Way, including the most recent 2005 denial of a similar project for three single-family home sites with Windover Way frontage with residential estate zoning. Subsequent to that, the city council did approve a CUP for this property for a single-family home on five acres with OR zoning and conservation land use. You know how many conditions they put on that? Three. You must subdivide from the parent parcel. You have to do that anyway. You must do a stormwater plan. You have to do that anyway, whether you're doing a CUP or not. And the last one was, you have to follow any criteria required in an estate permit. You have to do that anyway. We would not be seeking any additional conditions other than what was put on the last CUP on this property that we supported. So the concerns about a CUP don't seem to add up when you look at the history of a CUP for almost the exact same project on this exact property. Lastly, as stated earlier, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted overwhelmingly to deny this with a vote of six to one. Our concern is that with this request, the applicant is asking the city to increase their vested rights for development on this property and property value, well beyond their stated development plan. The higher development density the applicant is requesting would most certainly increase their property value and development potential, but at the expense of the environmentally sensitive land, including connected high-quality 500-acre wetland, Bird Lake Marsh, the expense of the stable longstanding development density pattern in the surrounding area that has been in place for over 20 years. There's been virtually no change in the development pattern in that area, which maintains the continuity and stability of our community. It keeps us a desirable place for people to want to live, to move to. So in your review, the LDR requires that you review this based on the application as it has been submitted to you. In this case, at this point, we have been given no site plan. There has been no tree survey submitted. There has been nothing that shows any real intent of anything other than talk. So based on what you have in front of you, you must review this based upon the most intensive land use and maximum intensity and/or density within the zoning district requested in the application. That is what the code says you have to do. That's how you're supposed to review this process. One of the, I mentioned comp plan inconsistency, and I'm going to give you an example, one example of the ones that we've listed, and that's policy 1.14.8. Negative impacts of residential land uses on environmentally sensitive areas shall be minimized. Authorizing a completely unnecessary rezoning that increases the development density no less than 25 times the current zoning development density on an old-growth forested upland buffer adjacent to a high-quality 500-acre wetland is completely the opposite of minimizing impacts on environmentally sensitive areas. Going to quickly go through a few of the policy-based, sorry, the LDR policy basis for denial. The requested rezoning should be denied because the requested rezoning is unnecessary. This is in your code. This is section 28, 322C, 3440A7. There was a lot of talk about they have no room to build, and this came up several times. So what we've, the applicant has submitted a few maps that are scaled, which means you can actually measure to scale all of these different things on the property that they had talked about. You have the utility easement, the wetland line, and then I actually put a 25-foot wetland buffer, which according to Ms. Busaka is twice as wide as it needs to be, so they would even have more room. One inch is 50 feet on the scale of this map. This is the map they submitted. These are the parcels. This is a 50-foot setback. As you can see, the vast majority of 50-foot setbacks, lot setbacks, they're in the wetlands, almost 100% in the wetlands. This is the wetland line down here, and this is a wetland buffer. The wetland line is going to be more controlling on where you can be developed than a lot setback. There's plenty of room in these areas for maneuvering around. Oh, just so that you know, they said 1,200-square-foot house. This is a 3,700-square-foot house, 50 by 70. That is a single-family or single-story slab size. So there is lots of room that can be moved around within the developable envelope on the property with 50-foot setbacks. We tried to look at, could they develop? Is this really a problem? Because if it is a problem, we would support a variance to the setback. We would come in and support that as well, because zoning is not a tool you use to address issues like setbacks. That is a unique, they're saying it's based on the unique features of that property, they're having issues. That's not what zoning's for. Zoning's for establishing density, what's the appropriate density of development on a parcel. The applicants also have the ability to employ other design options, such as building a two-story home, reduces your footprint, utilizing creative footprint designs. There's V-shaped, U-shaped, L-shaped, staggered. This allows even more flexibility to minimize impacts and avoid trees. As I mentioned, the CUP conditions, that we have a living example, a recent historical example of what a CUP would look like on this property, three conditions, three conditions they already have to do. There has been no substantial change in the zoning in the area to support the requested rezoning. Therefore, based on your code, the existing zoning is correct. This is chapter 34, article 2, division 1, 34-40A2. The applicant has not provided any evidence of substantial change in the zoning in the area. Neither does the city planning department staff report because there hasn't been any for over 20 years. It's been stable. The overwhelming majority of zoning in proximity of the portion of the property where this rezoning is requested is large lot, low-density residential zoning that's been in place for over 30-plus years. The requested rezoning increased development density is not consistent with the surrounding development patterns and far exceeds the applicant's stated development plan. They're seeking a change from one home to five acres with a CUP as is allowed to R1B that allows by right 5.8 homes per acre. The land use would limit that to five. That's where you get 15 to 18 homes on the uplands. The requested rezoning increased development density is not consistent with the environmental sensitivity of the property, including high-quality wetlands and old-growth forest. Drastically increasing permitted development density under R1B is inconsistent with protection of functional value of the high-quality wetlands on the property. Over the past several years, we have all seen and witnessed the real-world implication of not protecting the functional value of wetlands and other environmentally sensitive lands. The requested rezoning should be denied because the city has uniquely and purposely defined the OR zoning district. No other zoning district is defined the way the City of Titusville has defined OR in its category, as permanent. It says, "It is intended that this district will not function as a holding designation for land, but rather a permanent classification in order to ensure present and future residents of the city are able to enjoy the benefits of the natural environment." Based on this definition, any reasonable person performing due diligence would believe the entrance property would retain its OR zoning permanently. This was most recently upheld in a similar rezoning request on the same property in 2005 with SSA 16-2005. The requested rezoning should be denied, be denied because the permitted development density will irreparably damage Windover Farms' community character, impact property values, and desirability of our community. Changing, OR has a very limited number of uses that can come with it, open space and a single-family home. When you look at these other residential districts, there are other uses that are acceptable. Daycare facilities, churches, there's a list of them, and all of the other residential districts. That would be a change that is not currently allowed. Our community has consistently objected to any increase in permitted development density along our forested entrance, entrance, and the environmentally sensitive lands on either side of Windover Way. We're equal opportunity offenders. We also bother Brevard County when they try to develop on the other side of the road.
County commission meetings next week. No.
Unfortunately, I do want to raise a couple of issues there.
But here, we're going to hold up on those issues because, boy, that's a heck of a long presentation. Hold on, we got a couple of questions at least. Member Stokel.
Yes, so I think the applicant was open to the CUP, but the issue she brought up was the 50-foot setbacks, which I'm looking at this map, which is not, it doesn't look doable for at least one of the homes here on this map I have. The other issue was moving, reducing the commercial and adding more residential. So I think the applicant would have gone that route if it hadn't been for those two issues. Because of that, I think that's why we're here now, which leads us back to, I think, what council, most of us have mentioned already, the binding agreement, which I would venture to say, if that was assured, that there, there were only two homes that most of you guys would probably be okay with.
I think it would depend if it was R1B or not, because that is a big jump in zoning density.
But it would be, so the binding agreement would, with these homes, the, I mean, these, these look like R1B for these two homes, and then they would be locked into only those two homes. And so if they were to sell the property, that new owner could only do what's in that binding agreement.
And when the, when another landowner then looks at a zoning map.
Mm-hmm.
What are they going to see?
They'll see, yes, what would be voted on with a binding agreement.
But are they going to see that on the zoning map? Are they just going to see R1B?
They may see that, but they won't be able to do anything with it except for what's allowed with the agreement. And they would know that before they purchased the property. They should know that essentially. I mean, otherwise, I mean, that's on them, but they would have to do that. And then if they want to do anything beside what is in that binding agreement, they would have to come before council at that point. And that would be with that. That's the condition, which in theory is kind of like a conditional use permit.
Well, hold on a minute, hold on. We're getting into a seminar here. So have a seat just a minute. I mean, because if nothing else, what I wanted to do when I started here was I wanted to become even more informed, although I must admit, I think I got all that in one of your long emails. I'm serious. I think that, I mean, there was nothing wrong with that.
There is no doubt they can build with the 50-foot setbacks. There is absolutely zero doubt. If you measure from, you can, I mean, all you have to do is look, you measure from the lot lines, it is to scale, there is, if they can put a 3,750-square-foot house easily with lots of room around it, I don't think a 1,200-square-foot, 1,200-square-foot house is going to be a problem. I don't understand how it would be.
To clarify, the 25-foot setback is starting from the wetland line to the home, correct?
It's 15.
Setbacks on multiple zoned properties begin at the zoning boundary, not at the lot line.
Okay.
It may not be what Mr. Rice said at the meeting, but that is the way the zoning works. So setbacks are based on the zoning district.
When there's multiple zonings on a parent parcel.
Correct. So if there's, if it's all the same zoning, then it is the lot line. If it's multiple zonings, then it is the zoning district.
So to clarify, just so we're all on the same page, from what we have up here, the setback is being measured from the end of the wetland to, which is showing here 25 feet and 30 feet only on both sides.
I don't know what they did. I haven't seen that. But if it's, if it's the same zoning, then it is from the lot line. If it's, if it's two zonings on one property, then it's from the zoning district boundary. Does that make sense?
Yes, because it's, there's two issues. One is setback. And the other is, as Ms. Busaka said earlier, the 15-foot setback from the wetland. It's a buffer for the wetland, construction buffer. So those are two separate issues. Both have to be complied with. But the lot setback is from the property line unless it's a split zoning boundary. So the curvy line at the top between the existing OR and commercial, that would be the boundary on that portion of the property that the setback would apply to. The rest of it, the 50 feet comes off of the property line. And so down here, like where you're looking at this wetland.
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm looking at.
It starts at the property line and goes up 50 feet, which is a little bit on this side of the wetland, but then there's still a buffer for the wetland protection that is in play. It's not as wide.
Okay, I think that's the confusion because that's not what's here. It's coming from the wetland line to the home, which is only 25 feet, which, looking at that, if we're measuring that, you can't do it with a 50-foot.
Looks a lot bigger there.
So that, I think that I would feel like would need to be clarified.
That's why I tried to get it all on one map, and I don't know if it's more confusing or less confusing.
No, I think it clarified.
Because then they may be able to, the setback might not be an issue, but it looks like you guys are on two different.
Maps.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
Imagine that.
Right. Okay. And then, so that would solve that issue, but then I think we still have, Peggy, correct me if I'm wrong, the issue of community commercial being reduced and wanting to expand some residential into that.
That's good.
That is an issue, but I'd also like to comment that open-space residential allows not a conditional use but a permitted use, bed and breakfast in, golf courses, parks, and tennis clubs. So it is not just single-family and parks. This could stay in the OR zoning and someone could put up a tennis club. Now, I'm not a tennis player, but I have been to some tennis clubs, and they can be fairly intense uses. And I would say that probably more intense than a single-family residential.
And what are the uses that are allowed in the other residential districts?
Actually, what we're, I'd be happy to provide that to council at a few.
Member Stokoe, are you done?
Yeah, I just, just to clarify with the issue of the community commercial to residential, that would require, you couldn't do that as part of the CUP, correct?
That's correct. It has to be a change in the zone.
Okay, thank you. That, I think that was my last question.
Vice Mayor.
All right, I'm going to make this quick. Are you flexible?
Am I what?
Flexible.
Flexible?
Flexible.
I used to be a lot more flexible.
Okay, you have a sense of humor. Yeah, touche to you. As far as, you have a lot of requirements, and you were saying you, you know, we should just deny because of all those requirements. You've heard our discussion up here, right? Are you flexible?
Well, we've offered to pay their fees, so I think we're pretty flexible.
No, you're not, no, you're saying that if you go with the CUP, then we'll pay your fees. So that's not flexibility. That's just saying, go my way, and I'll pay for it. That's not flexibility. So I'm asking you because we're trying to find a way, because you know, the first thing, when you started talking, one of the things that, I drove there, I'm going to tell you, I drove there. It's beautiful back there. But if I, if the land was just normal land where I could put a house on it, you're going to have an entranceway. I think I heard the applicant say, they don't want to be around people, so they're going to go, they're going to have all this property up front where you're not going to be able to see the house at all. So my question again is, are you flexible enough? Because, Member Stokoe is really, and I think all of us are saying the same thing, binding agreement actually gets you exactly what you're looking for. You don't want any future person to come in to do something else that is more than two houses, and a binding agreement would do it. But you argue that, well, when you look at the map, you're going to see something, and then a future developer is going to think that they can do something with their property, which they can't because a binding agreement is there, and they have to come back before our city council to get it changed back. So.
And it's not just on that property. Our concern, because we unfortunately have had to do this multiple times for multiple properties on both ends of the entrance, on both ends of our community, it would be, because this is changing, one of the criteria that's in your code about when you can look at doing a rezoning is have you seen development changes and have you seen intensity changes in the development pattern in that area? And so this would create that on paper.
Yeah, on paper, part of the paper, the paper that you're looking at, but when you're looking at documentation, you'll see it's only two houses. So there's not going to be an impact to that area.
But we cross jurisdictional boundaries a lot, too. So half the time, we're in the county, and they're just going to look at the city's zoning map, and I don't know how deeply they're going to dig. But, I mean, clearly, we have come here to say we support the two single-family homes. We think that's a good outcome, two single-family homes on that property. That is their vested right. That's what they bought, that's what they have a right to develop right now with the OR and the CUP and the conservation land use. They can do that by right on that property right now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we're going to move on to the next presentation, and we're going to try to, because you can't say a whole lot more than she can already said. But that being, that being said, I do feel like it was, it was a good seminar. When we went into the 14th minute, it became a seminar. But, and you're the next presenter, and we'll go from there.
My name's Connie Milton, and I live at 6822, can you hear me?
A little louder.
6822 Windover Way. First, I wanted to address a couple of things that have been brought up. Binding development plans are not binding. Look at your own Land Development Regulations, chapter 34, article 8, titled Development Agreements, and your LDR Development Review Procedures Manual, section 16. We already looked into this. We talked about this at the P&amp;Z. So, Mr. Jordan, if you had been watching the P&amp;Z, that was an item that we brought up, and actually, Mr. Rice, and of course, Mr. Rice may be incorrect on some things, but he actually said in that meeting, we were right. Binding development plans evaporate after five years. They're no longer binding. They are not binding.
I'm sorry, it's, a development agreement is different than a binding concept plan. You're talking about a development agreement, which is a totally different issue. That would be similar to what we have with the Titus Landing Development Agreement. This concept plan would be similar to what you just approved with SISN. Those are not the same.
Right. If I could read from the code, section 3439, under Submittals, "A conceptual plan voluntarily submitted will be deemed binding on an applicant, assigns heirs and successors entitled for possession of the lot tract or parcel of land. Request to modify the concept plan may be executed by administrator in cases where the modification is classified as minor. Except for minor modifications, substantial modifications are considered nonadministrative and require approval from the city council with recommendations from the plan and zoning commission through a rezoning process." That's, what we're talking about here is a conceptual plan submitted to you that you rely on becomes binding on the applicant and successors entitled. Development agreements are a different animal that have their own statutory process and code process for development agreements.
Okay, so I wanted to make sure we were clear on the term we're using because a binding development agreement or a site development agreement is not binding.
Right, this is a conceptual plan submitted as part of a rezoning is binding on the property owner and successors, and they have to come back through a rezoning process to amend.
So if it's sold, okay. I just wanted to clarify that. The other thing that Mr. Rice had said at the P&amp;Z at one point, not last time, but the one we went in February, was that setbacks were based on a, always based on the property line. So that's something we had looked into as well. And when you ask, are we flexible? I think the flexibility comes in, this is actually one of the surveys that was provided in it. We blew it up so that we could get it to scale and understand exactly where the setbacks would be, both off of the wetlands. Now, Sandy, Sandy put this at 25 feet setbacks off the wetlands. There's the wetland line. That's 25 feet. So if it's just really 15 feet, then there's a whole lot more room here. This is all to scale. If you look at that, that's 75 feet. Our flexibility here is, you see that line right there? This is the existing zoning line that swoops down like this. We've proven here to scale, this is to scale, that you can already build, as is today, without the flexibility you're asking for, a 3,750 square foot slab size in this northern piece. You can build the same-sized house or more in the southern part, little peninsula in the wetlands. You can do that right now. If there is a setback problem, that's what a variance process is for. We support a variance. We even said we would come here and support the variance that's required. But let's go even more flexible than that. We would not have a problem at all. In fact, I had asked Megan and Jason to get with us tomorrow. We wanted to talk this flexibility, but we can talk it a little bit tonight. We can talk it more with them tomorrow or this weekend when they're available. But that line right there, we have no problem with that, this line being straightened out to be that line. That will put additional, some of the existing OR into the commercial. Thank you. That would put some of this additional OR, that's OR today, up into the commercial side. But it would take, and we've got square, we've got acreage here. Now, we know that is 0.45 acres that would go from OR into the commercial, and this is 0.61 or 0.6, a little over 0.6, that goes from commercial into the OR. Well, now, now you definitely have no setback problem. What we do have the concern with is if you change this, we don't, we do not support changing this open-space recreation zoning and land use of conservation. We don't support that change. But hey, we don't mind where they put that line. The applicant mentioned that, oh, there was all kinds of meetings at, thank you, there was all kinds of meetings at the city council in history. The previous owner was trying to move this existing OR line down into the commercial, extend the commercial down onto Windover Way. So we definitely thought that because there was going to be a 50 or 75-foot, 75-foot driveway commercial on the Windover Way right there. So that was, that was, that was what went on at that time. I want to talk to you, though, about some other very specifics. Sandy even mentioned that staff report is supposed to evaluate this based on the most intense use unless there's some additional data that we could review. There was no other additional data that we could review. I don't know what you're looking at there, but we weren't provided that. We don't know. That wasn't in the, in the plan, in the package with any of those houses. I know what we've done with the data that we were given, and we can prove that the houses can be built. So we need additional, you know, other data, hopefully. The, and you mentioned the warranty deed that they bought. It's per the existing zoning. They purchased it that way. They knew, they've got volumes of information to show that this is OR zone property, open space recreation and conservation land use. One other thing, you've got a package of exhibits that I provided. Do y'all have those there? Yeah, everybody got those. Now, one thing I want to bring up before I go any further, that we do have petitions signed by over 800 people in Windover Farms that are against this rezoning. It's over 500 and something houses with those 800 and something signatures. The community is committed to, this is not something that we're, you know, we approve of this rezoning that's happening or land use change. And that you've got a copy, exhibit number nine is the copy of the petition that was signed, and there's statistics on the numbers of people. There's one copy, I think, of the roster of the names and addresses. I don't know who has that one copy. But here's, here's some petitions I wanted to point out, I mean, excuse me, some exhibits. I've got to stay in the microphone here. The exhibits that I wanted to point out. I took the opportunity on exhibit number six to pull together what OR versus R1, R1B zoning allows. Also, if you look at exhibit number eight, and please look at exhibit number eight because this has been brought up, additional uses. You don't just talk about, this is, this table just talks about the house you can build, what size it is, what the setbacks are. The setbacks on OR, yeah, they're 50 feet, but we proved that's not a problem. That is not an issue. Now, as far as home size, slab size, OR has no minimum, no minimum. You can build 100 square foot house, or you can build 10,000 square foot house. OR has no minimum, so that's not an issue. The setback, and again, when I did this table, let's compare apples to apples, it's per five acres. OR allows one home on five acres, but the R1B zoning allows 29 homes on five acres, 29 homes. The land use that they're requesting to have changed, it allows 25 homes on five acres. Yeah, there's 3.36 acres of uplands that they're trying to get changed to this R1B. That'll allow 16 homes minimum because of the land use they're proposing to use. And by the way, the land use that's proposing to be used is titled low-density land use. Low-density? Low-density allows five homes on one acre. That's way more dense than across the street from this property is. All those platted, single-family lots over there on Windover Way, just right across the street from this property, they have an average of 1.68 acres per lot, where this, where this would be five homes per acre zoned if you approve the R1B zoning.
All right, hold up. Member Stokoe.
Yes. Peggy, Connie, right?
Yes, Connie.
She has the map over here showing that the two homes could be built. Do you guys have any information on that? Because part of me would think that if the applicant could build the homes that they're trying to do, we wouldn't be here.
Let me tell you what I don't know.
Okay.
When you take a map and you change the scale on it, even though the scale looks the same on the map, it's not accurate. So I don't really know, first of all, if the scale is that, that's accurate. I know what happens when you change an eight-and-a-half by 11 to an 11 by 17, and that scale that's shown is inaccurate. So I would need to see a copy of that and make, ensure that the scale is correct. And that would be helpful to have before I could intelligently discuss that. Now, that may be 100% accurate, but I don't know it, and I know that people who aren't used to changing scales on maps don't always realize that that happens.
Well, I can address that for a minute. This was plotted by a surveyor.
So going back, Peggy, from what we do know and what we have seen on our end from the staff analysis with what the applicant is trying to do, given the conditions, do you feel in your professional opinion that they could build the two homes, given the setbacks and everything that they have to do to?
I would need to look at it. I'm sorry, I can't, I haven't had an opportunity to review that, and I can't state that tonight.
What about with what the applicant has submitted of what they want to do?
I haven't seen it.
You haven't seen that?
No, ma'am.
Okay, okay.
Remember, we're in the first reading, and make, and everybody else remember that too, because we go down this road. And Ms. Busaka and staff would not have had all these things just yet. So we are in the first reading, and certainly we have gathered a ton of information so far from both sides. Member Nelson.
Let me, let me ask you something. We don't have a tree survey yet, correct?
Right, and we won't get that until the building permit.
So is it possible? So is it possible that maybe we can't land on a house being exactly where it is on the map if we're trying to save trees, if we're trying to save a buffer between these houses and Windover Way?
Yes, ma'am. That's true. Until you actually get a tree survey, which we would require as part of the building permit, we wouldn't know.
Okay. So I'm assuming you guys would rather have a tree buffer?
We've been asking for that, yes.
And those trees undisturbed? If, and if it means moving a house one way or the other, that's better than, as long as we still have the, we'd rather have the buffer than?
Right, and you, and you can do that, as Sandy alluded to. This is just a, just a square rectangle, square footage. There's all kinds of layouts you can use. I mean, you've, you've got the flexibility of a 3,750 square foot right there plus, because this had 25 foot wetland buffer on it.
I understand that, but if the idea, their idea is we're going to save these tree forests, and we need something, we need some flexibility so we can put a house someplace else. You understand that part?
Understand, and that's, my understanding is that's the variance process. That's not a rezoning process. So the purpose of rezoning is to determine the density allowed on the property. The, would be a variance that would be required, and we would support a variance.
So why a rezoning as opposed to?
Asking me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. First of all, zoning is not just about density. It's about use intensity. It's about protecting property, so setbacks do come in. That's why when you look at the zoning code, you see setbacks. You see uses, you see height. It's all of those things taken together. Secondly, a variance has very specific criteria for it to be approved. The fact that 100 people come out and support it is not what the Board of Adjustments and Appeals is supposed to look at. They're supposed to look at that very specific criteria. So without analyzing that, even though these fine people have a great deal of support for that, I couldn't suggest to you that the Board of Adjustments and Appeals will make that decision. And as you know, the decision for the Board of Adjustments and Appeals, if you don't like what happens, it has to go to circuit court. You don't have the right.
To change.
So that's correct. So there, it's not as simple a process perhaps as it sounds like if you're not, have you not gone through that. And one of the things that, for the, the Board of Adjustments and Appeals are not allowed to look at, the financial impacts, and they're not allowed to look at if this is a situation of the person's own making. So those two criteria depend on the perspective of, you know, the Board of Adjustments and Appeals. They all, there's lots of other, and I bet that Mr. Broom has already pulled those up. No? Oh, I thought you'd be, I, oh, yeah, right. I get, I get the 30 somethings to help me. So that criteria, and if you give me a minute, I can find it, but it's not just?
It's not black and white.
No, ma'am. And it's not just the support of the neighbors as heartfelt as that is. So there's lots of things that have to be looked at here that aren't related to whether or not a variance can be just approved.
So this is first reading, so we really don't have the answers. We're just sort of asking the questions right now to find out.
And I think the variance issue is based on the existing zoning line where it is. And when we talk about flexibility, I just mentioned that earlier, the flexibility is, let's just straighten out that Kirby line, which I've asked Brad Parish and Ms. Busaka since Thursday. How is that line actually determined? And I haven't gotten an answer yet from them. Where is that survey that identifies exactly where that line is? So I don't know how that's set in stone in any kind of records anywhere, but looking at a map or, you know, those, I keep calling them cartoons, they're not really cartoons, but they're, you know, it's not a survey. There's no way right now that I've been told where that is in stone. So hey, let's just straighten out that little curve, whoever grew through it before. I don't know how it was drawn, why it was drawn, what the survey is.
Fixed.
Let's straighten that out. And wherever they want to move that, commercial on that side, OR on this side, we're good. And the variance problem goes away. It's gone.
Well, let's, let's let Ms. Busaka and the staff get some more answers for us. And second reading, maybe we'll have some answers, hopefully.
And I think you mentioned, maybe it was you, there's been a few of you up there, that there was some possibility of speaking with the other side. There was a point a few months ago that I had actually thought, they'll come together and they'll solve this thing, and here we are. So, so that being said, I certainly think we've gotten plenty of information. So if you could back up, I will go with counsel. I would say, applicant, do you feel like there's anything you need to say in response or rebuttal?
Yes.
And that's how that works. So I'm going to try to keep you close to three minutes on this one, because we're starting to defeat our purpose, except we have learned a lot. We have learned a lot.
Just to rebuttal to what she said, I don't know that she's qualified to make a survey and do those things as Peggy was indicating. And we can't just straighten out a line. That's part of the wetlands. We can't, that's what we're trying to avoid. So it's like, you can't just pick that. And we have had an environmental assessment done with a wetland survey to delineate where that wetland line actually lies. And that is the process that you have to go through for the rezoning. So that is why we are here. But that is all I, that is all I would say to that. So I don't need the full three minutes. I'll yield the rest of the time. Thank you.
Thank you. I hesitate to ask, but I would really hope that in our seminar here, we've gotten everything covered that can be covered, and we just take it home because there is no vote. Now, this is where we start to have hands go up and say, oh, I've got more things to say. But go ahead. I guess what I have to, I guess we can't call cards because we got about 60 of them over there. So I want, you know, I'm not sure how this goes there. Please, ma'am.
I, I, I'm gonna have to say, wait a minute, wait a minute, I know. I'm gonna have to say what I forewarned you all of hours ago. My brain is going, okay? But I was, I thought that what we were doing was making sure that those who did have a card, they're being represented by the people who did speak for and against.
I have a bunch of hands, and one of the similar eliciting.
Right, there was a lot, there was a lot of hands. And I would assume everybody was okay, except apparently the lady, you want one minute.
Uh, that's my call. So with that, no, go ahead, don't speak from there. Come on up here, real quick. Hoping that this, this works. We took a shot. We tried to do it different. I think we got a lot out of it.
Wait, wait a minute before you, wait a minute before you start talking.
Name and address for the record.
Wait, and before she's talked, I just want to make sure, just to make sure we are all clear and the audience is clear that the cards that we have, everybody's in agreement that the two speakers, the four speakers we had were speaking for, I'm sorry, were speaking for them. I just want to make sure, so we'll be correct.
Stan, you're different.
At the beginning, I believe there was a substantial number of people that were willing to, that were opposed to give additional time to a couple of speakers. That being said, there may be a couple of speakers that were not with that group, and you could certainly ask maybe one or two that still want their three minutes.
We got Stan out there, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Let's move on. Let's not confuse this. All right, go ahead, name and address.
My name is Arlene Perez, 2887 Long Lake Drive. And in the spirit of keeping things equal, the reason why I'm speaking on behalf of Windover is that the applicants did state their history and did state their feelings and their feelings of trust and mistrust. So I just wanted to make sure that we had an equal response to that. Titusville, you think the space center. But the people who live in Windover understand what Windover means. Again, it is the oldest archaeological site in the country. And that means a lot to us. We're very special. We, we do not know the applicants, but they do not know us. We have parents, teachers, moms, who have been here for generations, who have been here since Windover was instituted. We have people that are not only citizens of Windover, but they're citizens of the country because my neighbor helped build the rocket that took us to the moon. John Doyle, one of our board members, part of the shuttle program. So we are all just as upstanding citizens as the applicants, and I just wanted to make sure that we were on even keel. And then there's an issue of trust. I've never liked to be called a liar, but trust has to be earned and respected and gained. And there's a lot of questions, especially in the market that we live in, the speculation of the real estate market. A lot of trust has to be forged between us, and that's why we're asking them to come to the table, like you're suggesting. Because if we trust them and we rezone, Pandora's box has been opened, not necessarily for us the next five or 10 years, but possibly for our children and grandchildren. So we're asking for trust, we're asking for transparency, and we're, there's a lot of questions that we have, haven't had answered. You know, it hasn't gone unnoticed by many of us that they paid an extraordinary amount for land that they knew they had to fight, that they had history on. So again, we're just asking for transparency, and we're asking for trust, and we're asking for the same thing they're asking from us. And that's the only reason I, I wanted to come up. Thank you.
Good job. And in reality, without the, the, coming from that side, I really feel like, in a, in a sort of way, everybody up here has kind of, you know, said, whether it's, are you flexible, or are you willing to do this or that? And like I said previously, I knew there was, at one point, I understand there was a meeting, not sure where, there was a meeting, and it didn't go well. And I'm kind of hoping that we can, again, you know, be transparent and move forward. But in the end, what will end up happening, and it's not tonight because it's the first reading, but in the end, you, there's an opportunity for a win-win here. There's an opportunity for a win-win, and nobody has to go home the loser. But at some point, if we can't come up with that win-win that we all seem to kind of want to have up here, then we're going to have to make a decision, and somebody's not going to win. And it's not something we look forward to either. And like I said, you know, kidding around, it's really frustrating because in reality, nobody, nobody lives in our city. I mean, I'm not, don't mean that in a negative way, but it's, it's a tough situation that I, you know, I guess it's just that property that we get to deal with, but it's like, gosh, that's, that's not even ours. But it is ours. I was kind of hoping the county would look at that and see about taking that over today. But that being said, I, again, and I, we'll ask one more time here, first of all, because I think I really need to, a city attorney over there will get very upset with me if I don't. I know Stan will want to speak, but is there anybody else on there who's been here for all of this, feels like something wasn't said that needs to be said? So, don't get, just ask, there you go. I think I heard something over there. Come on up. Well, there you are, if you're going to speak. Or maybe not. Wait, 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 you need to come up to the microphone. Name and address for the record.
Virginia Wright, and I live at 6318 Windover Way. Been over there 40 years, so we were there in the beginning. I take umbrage to what you just said. Yes, we live in the county, but we go to church in Titusville. We use Titusville shopping. We use the utilities. We use everything. The restaurants we support. Why do you think that we're lesser? Because we don't live in a county?
I'm going to interrupt. I never use the word lesser. I have always found it unique. I've never been in a situation where we have a full house and they're really technically not in the city. So that's all I'm saying. Obviously, I'm putting as much time into this. Clearly, you could tell I read all the emails because I pretty much knew what they said. I have, we have a very tough decision to make, and I just found it a very unique thing that it's very, very rare that we have a situation where, that we have now. But that has absolutely nothing to do, I mean, I'm looking around this room, I know so many of you, some of you, yeah, he's smiling at me now, we go back to Titus High Football when he was my ninth grade football coach. Well, no, you weren't coaching me, I'm sorry. That's, that's not fair to you. But no, that's got nothing to do with anything.
Well, I just want to point out that, that even though we may not, we cross that boundary into Titusville when we go on 405. We use everything in Titusville, and we support Titusville. So you might as well think of us as your citizens.
And let me just go one step further. I have a sister who's moving into that area within a month, so she too will be one. Hey, hey. So we'll just leave it at that, before she gets mad at me. So, bring the microphone to him. Here, microphone, use that one. Use that one.
Yes. Okay, first of all?
Turn on the microphone, get it closer.
If we're not in the city of Titusville, then why is the permitting, you know, the permitting going through this city?
I don't know.
If the property is in?
Hold, let me ask, I don't know.
The subject property is in the city.
Well, that's part of Windover Farms, isn't it?
No, sir, it's not. In fact, you have a, you, when you drive into Windover Farms, you drive by a whole series of houses that are not in that subdivision.
Okay, are any of the Windover Farms property in the city of Titusville?
No, sir.
Okay.
That was a good question, because I didn't know that either.
That is a good question, but let me just go a little bit further, okay? When you have documentation and you have word of mouth, the documentation as a prior CPA, retired CPA, the documentation is the important thing. You don't listen to the IRS agent to say, this is what I'm going to do. You wait until you get that closing letter from the IRS to know where it's at. If these people, I don't care who they are, if they turn around and if they're honorable people and say they're going to build two houses there, then if the zoning allows it, I don't see why, they just don't do it. Why do you have to put the Windover Farms residents in a possible vulnerable situation in the future where if these people can't get financing, or anyone can't get financing and decide not to build the houses there, the two houses that all of us say okay to? And it goes, they die, or it goes to relatives? We bought a house in Windover that were foreclosed, and it was, the judge owned it, got 395,000 in financing, and then he died, and the relatives just stripped the place. I'm sure the judge had good intentions at the time when he got the financing, refinanced it. But people after that don't always have the good intentions that these two people have. I'd love to have them as neighbors, but I don't know what's going to happen in environment, in financing, and everything else, whether or not they will be true because of something happening to them. Documentation is more important, important than word of mouth. I'm sure everyone here knows that. Thank you.
Well spoken. Well spoken. All right, we're going to get caught up in this. Come on.
I'm Judith Kinlock. I live at 7501 Egrit Drive. I'd like to address the conversation that you had about having them sign a paper saying that they won't do that. Would that suffice? How many of you people signed a paper? And, and asked for rezoning? How many? Nobody did. We played by the rules. Okay? My second question is, if we rezone that property, does that mean my property is rezoned? Does it?
No.
No? You're just talking about that one little piece. And you can guarantee me that it's not going to rezone my property? Because I don't want my property? Because I don't want my property rezoned.
No, it won't be. No.
Okay, what if they go, and they make, uh, they get the rezoning, and they do do something? Okay? Then we gotta come back here and go through all of this again, third time, because you thought that that was a good idea.
Excuse me, if I could, ma'am, conditional use permits are only good for a few years. So, in the event that that expires, you'd have to come back to this anyway.
Oh, so we gotta do this again?
If you get a conditional use permit and expires, yes, ma'am. So, so their permanency that you have in a platted subdivision, even a plat can be replatted. There's not much that's permanent in land use that can't be changed eventually through a series of processes. So, there, I, I don't think anybody can ever guarantee permanency.
Okay, well, I, God bless you for telling me that, and letting all of us know that we can do this all over again.
Yes, ma'am, you can do this very frequently.
Come on up. This is, people are leaving ya. We don't do that. I got, you know, you wanna go last, don't you? You wanna be the last, or no? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
My name is Edna Humphrey.
Hey, let's, I know that we're moving out, and things are coming to an end on this one, but we got a speaker, so please be quiet, go ahead.
My name is Edna Humphrey, 7490 Windover Way. I have a question, rather than a statement, about your proposal. Did I understand correctly that if there's a binding agreement, it's bind, binding on the property, not the people?
So, to clarify, so if we were to go through with this, and make the changes, and have a binding agreement in place for only two homes with these certain conditions, if they were to sell that property, then that new owner has to meet those conditions only. They cannot go and do the multiple homes for the R1B, no, they have to do only what's in that binding agreement.
Okay.
Does that help?
Yeah, that helps. That makes it, in my opinion, a win-win.
Yeah, thank you.
Hey, call the meeting. Uh, Stan, come on up. You normally go last. No, no.
This is not, this is not a public hearing.
Stan Johnson, uh, even though this is not a quasi judicial, we're supposed to have some kind of, uh, uh, order here, Robert's Rules of Order. And the city of Titusville, right here, all you guys, and you, and you, attorney, and, and city clerk, you're not going on Robert's Rules of Order, you're having people speaking without introducing their names and so forth, you're doing this. You're not doing it right.
They gave their names.
Pardon?
They did, they gave their names and address for the record.
He just now did, but he, I don't think he did.
If he did, then I missed it.
Some other people have been not, they have, okay, you missed it. Okay, you're supposed to have speaking cards. I don't know the two people, this lady, she didn't have a speaking card. You're supposed to go...
They all have speaking cards.
Okay, she had a speaking card? Okay, so she has a speaking card. Okay, you're supposed to go court, okay, Mr. Jordan, okay, and Mr. Joe, he was, Joe was, when ordered to leave, he was supposed to get permission from you to leave.
No, he doesn't have that permission from me.
He didn't do it. What?
He does not have to have permission from me to leave.
Yes, he does. Yes, he does. That's on your Robert's Rules of Order. You're supposed to have some kind of recognition. Now, Mr. Jordan is leaving, of course he's leaving because I'm talking. That, that's one of the reasons. Pardon? Oh, oh, does he? All right, well, oh, that's good for him. But the thing is, is, is that you're not going according to Robert's Rules of Order, and, and, uh, and the thing is, is I've, I've been here a number of times, it's been after midnight, and Mr. Jordan's complaining, he's complaining, and he's tired already. He's tired already, and it's not even 10 o'clock. That's not an excuse for, for saying people with cards shouldn't be able to talk. So, what I'm saying is, everybody here who has a card, you've got a legitimate reason to, to talk, you've got, you've got legal rights to talk here. If they don't give you your legal rights, you can, you can nullify this, this public hearing. This is a public hearing, this was advertised, don't treat it like dirt. That's what you're doing. You're not doing it right. And I'm, I'm fed up with it, that's what I've had in the city of Titusville. You're not following order. So, let's do it this time. Give people the right to talk, when people have, give people who have speaking cards their, their rights to talk. This is a public hearing, this is not, you don't just pick and choose. And the thing is, like I said, it's not even 10 o'clock. I've been here many times, past 11, even 12 o'clock. Give these people from Windover Way, by the way, I've got five generations in my family, five generations in my family lived in Titusville, lived in Titusville, five generations in my wife's family lived in Titusville. Do I get any respect? We got, I got family that lived on here, and I've been here 50, over 50 years. For goodness sakes. So, so the thing is, is that, is that I'd like to see some, you guys.
Thank you. Thank you. I think you missed the part where we got together and decided to do it a little, little different. Come on up. We haven't said no to anybody to speak. I will say that we didn't know there'd be as many at the end, but quite honestly, there's been some good questions at the end, so name and address.
I'm Lindsay Griswold, I'm at 2605 Gator Trail. Um, I want to know if we are coming back on May 10th, and what's the process for that?
That's another good question.
From my understanding, it is advertised for public hearing, second reading on May 10th. At that meeting, someone may ask for tabling, and council may table it, if they do, they would table it to a time certain, but it is scheduled for May 10th.
So, on May 10th, we can assume that it's going forward unless...
It will definitely go forward, it will definitely be, it has to be, because of the rules that we've talked about, uh, it has to be on the agenda, because that's where it's advertised, and that's where it goes for a second, second reading. And that would be a reading where there'd be a vote. There was some talk about possibly tabling from, I believe, the applicant, and that can be discussed with staff and, and legal and all that, but as far as we're concerned, we show up, and it'll be on our agenda. And you may have been here in the beginning, when we tabled some things and took a vote to table, there was a request to table some items, and we tabled them. That could be the situation, but it will be on the agenda, it will be moving forward for a second vote, and I, we may hear some things in between in the next two weeks.
Okay, so May 10th, we'll be back, assuming that we will present, and the vote will occur.
Yes, yes, thank you. Anybody else, come on.
Christine Boland, 2755 Armadillo Trail. I just, I just want to bring up a couple of things I didn't hear tonight.
Sure.
Both of the owners, I, we have a little board here, meet the owners, not sure if you guys know, um, Mrs. Wright is a real estate agent, and Mr. Wright is a certified building contractor. Um, I thought I'd bring up a few upfront disclosures, clarifications, and questions. The applicant's owners have ties to possibly some of the same professions as city council members. So, with that being said, are there any members of the city council that will need to abstain from voting on SSA 1-21? Do any of you have a personal conflict of interest with investments that you need to disclose, or requires you to abstain from voting on this issue?
I don't think we normally answer that from the floor, I think they'll get that from the attorney, but that being said, I know I don't. But anyway.
You'd have to determine at the time, if, if the time of vote, there is a legal reason to abstain, then you would have to announce it.
Yeah, when he does that vote, he comes in, he asks that same question of us at that time.
Sure, no problem. Um, and pretty much everything else, I was gonna say you guys have heard, so I, I won't keep you any longer.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else here, we got more hands, go ahead. Well, gotta have to come up to the microphone, though, they can't hear you if you don't.
Veronica Clifford, Long Lake Drive, Windover Farms. There was a woman up here that was asking you a question, and you said, well, if we put those conditions in place, back there, um, my question was, is, was that based on the rezoning it to the R1B?
R1B.
Yeah, so that's based on the rezoning. Okay, I just don't like this rezoning issue. My next question is, is, I don't understand why can't, so under the OR, it says at C, that you can do, like a CUP, if you look at your, your rules and regulations. Why can't we do a CUP? Can somebody tell me why a CUP isn't, I mean, I, I understand the owners don't want to do it, but I was trying to understand why we wouldn't go that route, when we've been through this battle already a couple times, and that CUP was okay, and everything was cool? So, maybe, I just thought maybe the city could help me understand that, because I don't...
If I could, the applicant makes the application, so they ask for the rezoning.
Yes.
So, they would have to ask for a different action, and it would be a different application, and we would go through a whole different process.
I get that, but what I'm saying is, is, if they went ahead and asked for a CUP, would that be doable?
Well, it would have to be evaluated by staff, and evaluated by the, by the city council, and then they would make a decision at that time.
And since it shows precedence that it was approved in the past, I would say, not being educated, as you all are in this field, that this probably would get approved.
This is a quasi judicial process, and that means that they have to look at facts and evidence. So, the city council can't actually answer that until they have the facts and the evidence ahead of them.
I get it, okay. A CUP would not require rezoning.
That's correct.
And it, and it could be done, a new application could be done, and a CUP could be requested.
Yes, ma'am.
Member Soakel.
Thank you, I have a question. I am curious, though, what happened with the CUP that was issued back in the day? What happened with that person that applied for it? They, why did they not end up doing what they were given permission to do?
They let it expire.
So, we don't know why, what they came into, like, any...
They just let it expire.
Okay, and to answer your question, just so you are aware, I did ask that same question, because I was curious about why not the CUP, and I think it's the 50-foot setback was the big issue, I'm going to do some more research before it gets heard again, but that was the big issue, is the 50-foot setback.
So, then my next thing is, is my understanding is, is when you purchase property, the law cannot stop you from building a home, okay? So, I don't think it, in my opinion, I don't think it'd be an issue. However, if you can get that information, I'd love to have it, because I don't have it yet.
And, thank you.
That, and the also, if you remember, the reducing the community commercial and increasing the residential was another issue, that I don't think they can do with the CUP. So, again, I'm gonna do some more research, but that was a question I had.
Okay, so I call...
Anybody else?
This will be brief. My name's Robin Rogers, I live at 5675 Windover Way, we're the first house in the entrance, closest to the entrance. If you change the zoning to R1B?
R1B.
Okay, now, does that make it, they're always saying the precedent is set. Right now, there's been no changes for 20 years. So, if you change that little parcel in front of our subdivision, does that mean that now that is a precedent for anybody else who would, might want to go, oh, well, look, they just changed it, maybe we can do it next door, or maybe we can do it across the street? Does that, are you, are we, are we getting set up for more of these changes that are gonna take place?
Clearly, that's not our intention, we don't put any of this stuff on the agenda.
But that's a question.
We don't do any of this stuff, if people come to, come to the staff, or however that works, or Ms. Busaka, and then some, that rolls this way. So, we don't do any of that. We sit here at the very end, and...
But part of, part of the, part of the documentation that we've been listening to is what has been done in the past. There's been no changes in this area for 20 years.
Ms. Busaka.
So, we make this change, now it's like, oh...
I just, I just want you to know that the land use immediately to the east of Windover Way is lots 1E and 3E, which are the first two lots on your left as you go down the way, that land use is 15 units an acre. So, there is already a precedent set. Well, actually, the next units are platted, so, but those two are, so if you're just talking land use, the land use is 15 units an acre. In addition to that, there are properties, again, to the east, which are in a different subdivision, and I looked, and they don't have deed restrictions on them. So, if someone, as I said before, if someone were to come in and request a replat, there is no deed restriction on those properties that would say, that would change that. That being said, every analysis is done on a case-by-case basis. Because if you just looked at one piece of property, that, that doesn't set a precedent. You have to look at the entire property in the surrounding areas, you have to look at traffic analysis, you have to look at...
Well, we've heard from that.
Yes, all those things. So, um, right now, the land use on Windover is four units an acre. So, if you just look at, at the land use, you would have a very different perspective than when you look at the zoning, so you have to take it all in...
In the entrance, is that what you're referring to?
Yes, ma'am, I am.
The very entrance.
Well, Windover itself is four units an acre land use. Deb, yes, ma'am. So, um, so you, so, but, but we know that it's not developed at four units an acre, so you, it's not just what the colors are on the map, you have to look at it all.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for the question. Is there any other questions? Well, we got two or three going. Four or five.
Can I ask Peggy a question, real quick?
Yeah.
Peggy, does a binding agreement expire?
No.
So, what happens if somebody does get the...
My name is Carlos.
Oh, sorry, real quick, what happens if the binding agreement, like, somebody new does buy, and they don't want to go by the binding agreement?
Then we get to come back into this room and do it all again. It goes through the rezoning process, where that's what I was trying to explain to the late, the, one of the other speakers, is a conditional use permit can expire.
Okay.
So, that is actually less permanency going forward, because it's just time, and it doesn't require any public process.
Okay.
Where a zoning would require a public process.
Okay, thank you.
All right, go ahead, sir, thank you.
My name is Carlos Novella, I live at 4438 Hickory Hill Boulevard, both my mother and my sister live in Windover Way.
Okay.
My question is, they've talked about building more houses, but nobody's talked about the septic tank problem. All the houses in Windover Way have septic tanks, and we, we have water coming in from Titusville, but we don't have sewer. So, if they were going to build more houses, has there been any talk about maybe building a sewer system?
The, the water resources, and I'm not that department, but Water Resources has advised that sewer is not available to this property, and that a septic tank would be required. Now, septic tanks have very specific setbacks to water bodies, including wetlands, that would also limit the amount of available developmental, development on that site. So, when, when someone is estimating the number of units that could be put on that property, there's a lot more to it than just five units times three acres, because there's minimum lot width, there's septic tank regulations, all of those things.
Well, what I'm worried about is that this is a bird sanctuary, I'm worried about that they would build a bunch of houses, and with all of them with septic tanks, and that, to which would all end up in the bird sanctuary, that's what I'm afraid of.
Stand, and you understand, of course, that the septic tanks are, the state regulates those. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Come on up. Gotta be brave, raising your hand now. Name and address for the record, please.
Haley Thomas, Menonwood Lane in Orlando, Florida. I work here in Titusville and have for the past few years, I'm familiar with the Windover property, it's beautiful, been there many times, driven all over Titusville, so I know I don't live here, so before you think I'm unreliable, I'm here a lot, I promise. I know that council in general is very strategic, and you're very detailed in how you approve plans, and I know that you consider everyone's questions a great detail, it seems to me that the biggest issue tonight is ambiguity in these plans, and would it be helpful to council if the applicant submitted more detailed plans to come to a win-win situation?
I guess that's a question, I mean, obviously, as you may have noticed tonight, we're taking in all the information we can, and more. we can and more. But that being said, if the applicant desires to give us more information that can help us make a decision, sure. But if the other folks want to give us, I don't know if y'all can give us any more information. Yeah, you can, yeah, you can. You probably got boxes. So I, I, I don't know how to answer that because I need to see what the information is. I, I feel like they've given a, a lot of information already.
Right, definitely. And I mean, as a, not a resident of Titusville, as someone who's here often, I'm pro responsible development and it appears to me that the applicant intends to do very responsible development to conserve everything that the property currently offers as far as the wetlands and stuff like that. So it seems like if they can prove that they're definitely going to do that, that that would be helpful.
Mr. Mayor.
Certainly.
One, one of the things you have to be clear on is this is about an ordinance change. This is not actually about what they're going to do with the property. It's just the ordinance. The ordinance will allow them to do what they want with the property, but we're only looking at this ordinance and saying, is this acceptable for that area? So the data that we get from staff was certainly enough. Of course, we got the human side of it where we've got an applicant for the property that wants to do specific things and got neighbors who are saying, well, we don't like what we see. How can we fix this? So we have kind of melded the two together, but the bottom line is our focus should be only on the ordinance and not on what they're going to do with it.
I would advise mayor to, because that's a very good point. I think that, and your point can well be seen from your view watching us, it is about an ordinance, but it's also, we've kind of turned it into, man, we really would like a win-win. We really think that we could do that. And so maybe it got the, the eye off the ball of the fact that it is exactly about an ordinance, is this something we, you know, need to approve or not? So, but certainly a good idea and I appreciate your, your input and your, your care.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Real quick, Mr. Mayor, just to add to that, what would help me personally, I think there's confusion on the setbacks. So I feel like for me, when I'm looking at this, it's trying to see what is the best outcome? Is that a rezoning? Is that a binding agreement? Is that a conditional use permit? And so without knowing that or getting too different, you know, this is a 50-foot setback and then no, this is only 25, that, that's been confusing for me to try to figure out what the best course of action would be for.
And that should be more, more specked out next meeting.
Yep. So that would help me in part.
Anyone else? Come on up. You've been having your hand up a few times. You want to come up?
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Alexandra Ray. I live in 6715 Windover. So I guess my concern is mostly, well, the environmental impact. And for me, it's very important that this zone keeps protected. My husband and I just moved into town, so we are new and I consider myself to be fairly impartial because of that. Like I don't know really anyone. So I guess that I would like to hear more about both parties and for, based on what I've heard, and I'm trying to be very, very impartial again, I think that there has been a lot of aggression in the wording. And again, I'm trying to be understanding and, you know, it's a heated situation. But I think that for really to have that compromise in both parties, that respect needs to stay there. And I heard from the, the person who was to develop, I'm sorry, don't remember your name, something about these people. It's like if we start doing that naming and like being non-calm and non-rational, then we cannot have a proper conversation. So I think that, you know, for, I would love to meet, you know, and I think that there's a meeting happening perhaps with you? I'm, I'm not quite sure. Anyway, what I am trying to say is that for what I hear so far, I'm more leaning towards like not rezoning for many different reasons. I mean, the first thing that I, that happened to me when I came to that property was that I saw deer and like, oh my gosh, I fell in love with the place. So obviously for me, that is the most important thing. I do not care much about monetary or anything else. And I think that, I think that that should be the main reason of, you know, the decision for everyone here, not because I know someone or like, because like, I do not care how many, you know, if you were here since 50 years old or like 50 years ago, sorry. The most important thing is for you to consider what is, you know, is this going to set a precedent for future developments? I don't know. Again, I, I would like to hear more about it, but yeah, I guess the most important thing would be to consider, you know, to keep protected zones, not just in our community, just, you know, in general in the country. So that's my concern and that's why I'm here and thank you.
Thank you for expressing yourself. Well done. Any, come on up. It was a good, good experiment till it failed. There you go. All right, brother. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is David Poole. I live at 5995 Windover Way. Lived there since 1984 with my beautiful wife, Norma. My problem with all of this is, would y'all agree that the property is going to change hands sooner or later? It has to. That's my problem. With all these conditions and this, that and the other. The property owners, I'd welcome to build two houses out there and they can do that now without rezoning at the worst. And a variance for the setback. Okay? The house is going to be in the same place whether they, whether they get a variance or get it rezoned. What's the difference? We don't need to rezone it. The Planning Zoning Commission voted five to one, not, don't do it. There's a reason. When that property, if it's rezoned and it changes hands, which could be tomorrow, it could be 20 years, but it's going to change, then it's wide open for anything they want to do. That's what my problem is with it. And I email each of you individually stating that in the email. Please read it. That's it.
Well, thank you. Thank you. I'm trying again. Anybody else? Is he coming? No? No? He's not waving. I'm gonna, I'm gonna say that's a no. Okay, I'm gonna say that's a no. Oh, if, if he's coming, I'll wait. Well, I don't want to, I want to make sure. Okay, all right. All right, with that, with that, in just a second, we're going to take a recess, let you get out of here. But I do want to say I, I really feel like there was great discussion, great presentation. And even though the hands kept going, they were good questions. I really felt pretty informed coming in, more informed going out. Both the fours and the against, I thought you were excellent, handled yourselves well. And I guess that was so great, we're going to probably get to do this again. But with that, let's take a five-minute recess. Thank you, guys. Drive careful. We'll see you very soon. Stop. Stop.
Yes, sir. We are now on 11A, which is the, uh, under old business. It's a comprehensive plan adoption strategy. Council directed the staff to propose a strategy whereby certain portions of the draft 2020 Titusville tomorrow comprehensive plan may be incorporated into the adopted comprehensive plan. The staff recommendation is to consider adopting four separate amendments. The four amendments are, uh, tough topics are mobility, which is transportation, housing historic preservation, land use, and environmental. So as you recall, Mr. Parrish came before you, recommended the strategy. You asked him to come back, asked us to come back with more detail. That's the detail of the four areas we'd like to proceed forward with. And Peggy's here to answer any further question you may have.
I just have one comment. Um, we have a consultant. We'd like to get a consultant to help us do this since we don't have much staff. But, um, as part of that, we want to implement, we want to actually develop some draft language that could go into land development regulations so that you would better understand the implications of the policies. Sometimes we just give you policies and you're not sure how they're going to look on the ground. So what we'd like to do is not only give you the policies, but some of the, of the more specifics. So you'd have a better idea of what you're adopting. We think that would be more helpful to you and the public.
Um, Member Nelson.
I think that's probably a good idea because then it's sort of an action plan that we see it and it's not nebulous out there.
Yes, ma'am. That's right.
I, I say, yeah, let's do it.
All right. Um,
That's a motion.
Well, don't make a motion yet. Anybody else at council? Okay. Uh, call the cards?
Dan Johnston.
Dan Johnston. Uh, I've said I'm a registered professional engineer and I'm not real necessarily happy with some of the other engineers who are in my profession and what they're doing. Uh, and regarding the comprehensive plan, I've mentioned to you a number of times that we've got serious problems with our comprehensive plan that the city refuses to address. So let me mention a few of those serious problems that, uh, you know, we're looking at this, uh, item 11A comprehensive plan. And, and for example, right now it's we have numerous, numerous known erroneous flood zones proven to be erroneous. And what does the city do? What does the planning department do? What, what does the city do about it? Nothing. In other words, these, these properties, the flood zones don't have calculations. They're supposed to have calculations. And the city refuses to send it to FEMA. City refused to look at it. And they're, they're not right. That's number one. That's a pretty serious issue. So your comp plan is wrong. Number two, you have, uh, false reports that have been submitted to, to the FDEP. This is a different false report. The Resiliency Report that was issued by, um, Brad and Eddie. Uh, it, it ignored a number of things that I submitted to him and he just completely just threw them in the trashcan. And what is, what it is, is we have, we have numerous flood zones, floodways, excuse me, floodways under I-95 going to the west, draining Titusville, and they are full of overgrowth. That's illegal. And the city chooses to, to ignore it. I'll give you photos. It's illegal, but you do it anyways. You don't recognize it. You say it's not there. And that's not a problem. It is a problem. It's illegal what you're doing. So that's another problem with the comp plan. Um, the city is right now is, uh, has constructed numerous dams. I'm talking, I'm talking about even the dam over there near April Estates. It's, it's, uh, what DOT did, I think DOT constructed it, but they gave, they say they didn't want anything to do with it. So my understanding is that my reading about it is that particular dam that has that adjustable weir on it is that FDOT doesn't want to have anything to do with it. It's the city's responsibility. And it's illegal. It's illegal. In other words, you don't have the calculation, but you don't have nothing. You just, just, it's, it's, it's put there. And you got a number of dams, even where Mr., uh, Mr. Jordan lives. That dam over there, my goodness, it, it doesn't have compensatory storage, doesn't have the calculation for that, and it's in a flood zone. So, uh, anyhow.
All right. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. My pleasure.
Any other cards? I will take a motion.
Motion to approve, um, the comprehensive plan options strategy.
I have a motion from Member Nelson, a second from Vice Mayor. Roll call vote.
I'm getting tired. Uh, Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Uh, petitions and requests from the public.
Mayor, if we could, it's, uh, two minutes before 10:30.
I know. That's why I'm going fast. I just looked at my watch. Hold on. Keep going. Petitions and requests from the public. I see none. Um, now I think because we're going to say a little bit, but not much. Um, we need to take, I need a motion to continue after 10:30. Let's go. 10 minutes. I agree. Uh, we'll go to 10:40. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? The extension is till 10:30. We won't need it. Um, Aaron Council reports. I will go first this time. Um, I would like to say really and truly what a great and fun city picnic that was with some of the best burgers I've ever had. I found out from the fire department. They got them from the Mims place up there. I'm going up there. They were really good. Uh, and then I will need, I think I'm going to need, thank God me on this. I think I'm going to need a motion and approval. I would like to have city come up like they did with Dre Field for me. A plaque in Sandpoint Park speaking to the history of Titusville Little League, which was there for decades, I believe, like 55, 60 years. Um, and I just, as the time I walked that park, I'm like, you know how many people don't know all that went on down here for all those years? But then there's a lot of people that go down there and would really appreciate the, the memory of, of Sandpoint Park. And if you've ever been to Dre Field, they did one of those for me for the history of Dre Field because people were walking the park and didn't realize it was the local football field. And a lot of great things happened down there, including some state championships and some NFL players. So, you know, I just, if they do anything close to what they did last time, I will think it's amazing. And it would be very, to me, it just adds pride to our history. So with that, Member Robinson?
It is. Oh, I would just, uh, you know, if you finish, I can just go and get my two cents.
No, I said, no, I said, Member Robinson. So that means I'm done.
All right. Yeah. Well, only thing that I, I can't, I won't say I didn't do nothing this period, like I said last time, but I went through some training and, uh, uh, Member Jordan.
Well, timeout. Stop. You, you lost me there. I'm, I'm needing a motion for my Sandpoint Park idea. So anybody else want to, can somebody give me that?
I think what we're looking for is advisability for staff to
Well, I thought you said I needed a vote. Or maybe you just said council support. All right. Can we just go? Is council in favor of that?
Yes, yes, yes.
Very good. Thank you so much. So great picnic. I hope we can get some history down there at Titusville Little League. Now, Member Robinson.
All right. Yes, we went through some training and, uh, Member Jordan and I spent several hours together and had a good time.
Yes, we did. Had a great time.
Yeah, had a great time.
Well, where'd you train?
CPO, we went through some, uh, TPO setting and, uh, the, the strategy, uh, for moving forward for, uh, the next fiscal year.
Yeah.
So we, uh, it was, it was, it was good. Uh, as, uh, the council kind of, after I volunteered, became the, uh, the council member on the audit, uh, selection, uh, board. We met, did a great job. I was very, very pleased with the individuals that I teamed up with. Uh, gentleman from the, from the county and, and the lady from the sheriff's department, I think it was. But they were good. We all agreed. We are, we basically all on one card. We didn't disagree. We all had a little experience. One of the gentlemen had, uh, had been in auditing business for us, but I brought in a little experience from my past and working with contracts and auditors. Uh, so that was, uh, that was well. And, uh, that is about all of that I've.
That's all Member Jordan's going to allow.
That I've done.
Uh, Member Nelson?
Uh, this is, I just want to say thank you to Jim Thomas and the people who put Titusville Talking Points together. They did a beautiful art article on the Carter House and the Boys and Girls Club. So I came by and I got 20 issues and took them over to the kids. They were very excited, especially the young lady on the cover who kept saying, "I'm a star."
That's awesome.
So that was cool.
That's awesome. Makes it all worth it.
Yeah. And I wanted to mention Keeper of Our Beautiful is doing a coastal cleanup. Uh, and Rotary has offered to help. And that will be September 17th. And I understand last year they had over 4,000 people cleaning up that one day. Yeah. So if we have any groups, if you know any groups that want to help out, that would be great.
I don't know if you caught on the back cover of the Talking, Talking Points. That was your garden.
Oh, the garden. Oh, yeah. I don't have a copy with me. But the back cover is the garden. Yes. That is the garden that our master gardener and the kids made.
Wow. Very nice.
It was there pretty.
Thank you. Yeah.
Very nice.
And the lady, the young lady on the front, she is the master gardens, gardener's chief assistant.
Oh, that's awesome. Very nice. Uh, Vice Mayor?
Yeah. Um, unfortunately, uh, we're living in a, in a time where I shouldn't say unfortunately, but as a business owner, I would tell you that, um, it's becoming harder and harder to, uh, hire people and keep people. And so, um, I actually was talking to another council member from a different city, and it came to my mind that we need to make sure that, um, the pay that we have for our city manager is commensurate with, um, his duties. So I'm suggesting that we look at, um, having staffs, um, do a study of where our city manager is versus the same type or, um, population, uh, city to make sure that we are in lock step. Because the worst thing you want is even though he may say that, um, "I'm good here where I am," um, money does talk. And if somebody really wants a good city manager or good employee, um, they find a way to convince them to move and go someplace else.
I, and, and let me go ahead and interject. I don't disagree with that, and I'm not opposed to that. But if we're going to do that, I would think that we would do better all the way around, including perception, to do a pay. They just did one of Parrish, my wife was involved with.
Right.
Uh, you know about that, obviously. A, uh, and, and quite honestly, benefited some people who were under the radar.
Right.
Um, so I'm not opposed to that whatsoever. I'd just like to see that expanded. And I don't know exactly where to expand it to, but certainly we could, you know, talk about city attorney. We could talk about city clerk. Um, and it doesn't mean we have to make a move on those because they didn't make a move on a lot of those real quick.
Right.
So I'd like to see a, a, a pay study done. Um, actually, you know, you can do all, all staff or you can do, uh, management. Um, there's different ways of doing that, but I would like to do it more than just one individual a position.
We, we, um, are going to bring to you, uh, at mid-year, a, uh, proposal to do a pay plan study again. Palm Bay just completed theirs. Cocoa completed theirs.
Perfect.
So we're going to do a piggyback contract on that and get that analysis done so that we can go into '23. Um, we're also going to use a different strategy. The last pay plan we did, we did it over three years. So I'll describe that strategy that, that we're thinking about doing as we go through the budget process.
I would definitely be in favor of that, especially if you could look at Mayor Buddy Dyer for me and see how we compare.
What?
That's a joke. Anyway, uh, good idea. I agree. And I think you're probably, again, ahead of the curve.
Uh, we won't say bad about it, but that's a good thing for sure.
Absolutely.
That, that's all I have.
We got three minutes.
I got a lot, guys. I'm done. Now I got nothing.
What?
Pass.
Wow. Uh, City Manager?
Yes, sir. Um, just a reminder, uh, on 2 May, we're going to do the annual student awards ceremony, which
Can't wait.
we, uh, have not done for two years. And, um, we have had some parents express concern about, you know, the hugging and handshaking and all that. So, um, just as a, you know, we're not out of COVID yet. And so we'll just exercise the caution that's probably necessary to do that.
Well, we get instructions on what's acceptable and what's not. I'd kind of like to think, uh, shaking hands is back in vogue. And, and you can say, and I know
It just depends on who you speak to.
I've been in this education thing long enough to know you're going to have some parents, if you say, some parents, some parents are always going to say something. So I guess, and you should know that. So with that being said, I, I would like to have a little. Now, I hate to stand there if we're going to be there, so and so, and they're just, hey, how you doing? you doing? There he goes.
No, I, and again, I know you guys are.
If you say fist bump, I can do fist bump.
But, and I don't want to be telling you what to do, but I, I think there has been a couple of concerns that in the past, you know, we've hugged people and all that kind of stuff. So I think just as we come out of COVID, just exercise a little bit more caution.
Okay, thank you. Absolutely.
And that subjects your question. That completes my report.
City Attorney? Hey, Vice Mayor, I can appoint a city attorney. Go ahead, Mr. Robinson, Member Robinson?
Thank you.
Yes, yes, theater. Is that six o'clock? Six o'clock? Six o'clock, theater?
Performing Arts Center.
Which is a theater?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
All right, we good?